Amount of acreage, you know, square miles. And so they're going to be spending a lot more in transportation. So they're going to have to, you know, redo their budget to make sure that they're covering those, those transportation costs. So.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Different way.
All right.
So we, we, we always hear the term accountability.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's, you know, so is there a way for someone on the outside to take a, a look from a different lens? Do you see that as a best practice in terms of what a district is spending? So one of the things that I've brought up in the past is maybe, you know, we could have a consultant come in, someone on the outside, and look at, you know, how we're using our resources and maybe come up suggestions in terms of best practices. Do you see other districts doing that?
So I know that, that Dearborn just made an announcement, I think today, about having a firm come in and do a significant analysis of what's happening in the district and related to, you know, a variety of things. And so that may be somebody that you'd like to reach out to and take a look at what Dearborn's doing. And I, I just glanced over the article today, but I saw it pop up in my, in my news feed today that they were having an outside consulting firm come in and, and give them some advice on a variety of things related to how they're spending and academics and all kinds of things. So that might be a place to look.
Having a consultant comes in is basically saying that we don't trust our administration.
Not necessarily.
So.
I'm not saying that. Don't put words in my mouth. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying a fresh set of eyes in any organization can and cannot be helpful. And I'm asking Jay for best practice.
Obviously, this will be a topic of discussion for the next board.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Can I just point out one thing?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm just reading our goals, the strategic framework. Second to last bullet under goal two is establish a review process to assess how programs affect students in order to allocate resources equitably to cover the full range of student needs and abilities. So as a board, I guess our responsibility is to craft that review process.
And that was our for 2022 goal?
Mm-hmm.
So the question is.
Well, no, it's a, it's just in the strategic frame.
Oh, it's in the strategic plan.
It's not, it's not one of the district goals. It's in the strategic plan.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
But that, what we need to do is take that goal, that, that strategic plan goal, morph it into the annual goals and then hold ourselves accountable to actually accomplish that.
Okay. So looking at 16, 17, 18 there, I'm not seeing anything there, mostly yellows and greens. So with your permission, moving into board effectiveness, page 14. On this front page, nothing really jumping out. Again, lots of yellow, which is satisfactory, green, which is good or excellent. Conduct board meetings efficiently and effectively. I got a couple oranges and reds in there, but again, a majority of the board is, is okay with that. Read relative information related to agenda items and inform itself on agenda. Again, mostly green and yellow there.
Jay, just a moment. I mean, just as an example of how we've improved year over year. On Q7, we had one magenta and four red last year. And in Q7 right now, we've got, you know, basically everything is, you know, a green. So we've made significant improvements over the last 12 months.
Yeah, fantastic. Moving on to page 15, Q8 through Q13. Again, mostly green here. We do have some yellow and some red around balancing its needs, conduct board's business where the publics need to be heard, understand public modeling of effective decision-making process, annually review its code of ethics. Anything here that I would like to point out or jump on? Again, mostly green, pretty good space there. Okay. All right. Now, data-driven decision-making. This was the area in which in both years, this year and last year, this was the area that you scored lowest in, I'm sorry, last year. Data-driven decision-making was 2.6, leadership was 2.59. This year, data is, what is data this year? So data was the only one this year that scored in the needs improvement. Everything else was satisfactory. So this is the area in which you scored the lowest around making strategic decisions, using data to make, using the right data or having the right data, sorry, to make decisions, strategic decisions, ensuring student performance data well-defined, systematically using data from learners, classrooms, and schools to focus the strategic priorities, using appropriate data for district-wide decision-making, accountable to the community for continuous improvement. We've discussed some of these items already tonight as it relates to academics and whatnot. Anything else in here that we think we need to talk about or think we pretty much hit it all with our previous discussion?
Jay, how do we compare with other districts in terms of, you know, obviously we have a perception of ourselves in terms of what data that they're getting around Michigan?
I asked that question at the very beginning.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally.
Maybe I'll watch the video.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I can tell you that in my experience working with districts, that this is always a, a bone of contention in that, you know, boards either aren't getting what they're asking for or don't know what they need to be asking for. So it's, it's a constant, you know, working with boards and superintendents to kind of come together as to, okay, these are the important pieces of data that as a board, we need to make our decisions moving forward as to what's best for the kids in the district, what's best for the staff in the district. I mean, at the end of the night, you need this data to make an appropriate evaluation as to, you know, the job that your superintendent is doing. And so, you know, wrapping our heads around the, the data that we need to make these decisions is, is constantly a battle in, in districts that I'm working with. So I don't have any factual data. We're not keeping any of that. Howard had asked that earlier.
And he said he would take it back to his management to see whether they can take a database of all the districts there, consolidate them, and give us some statistics from it.
Because I know there's great, and I know Howard's the master of this, he got the president's word, but there are, there are class, I mean, there's like two, two or three classes.
Yeah.
You know, about, there's a 101, two, about data.
Yes.
About what you should get and that, you know, what's the expectation.
Yes.
And I was just, and, you know, I'm sure a lot of people or some have gone through that. So obviously, I think people know what you should be getting based on those classes or think you should be getting. So I'd be curious to see you.
Yeah. So, you know, obviously you need the student growth data in order to evaluate superintendent's that's 40%. So we need to see student growth data. Obviously, we need to see budgetary data because we need to determine as to whether or not our budget is, you know, being appropriately distributed across the district to those areas and et cetera, et cetera, relates to budget. We need attendance data. We need to have a good idea of the attendance policies we have in place because again, you know, by law, we have to evaluate our superintendents on attendance. We need to see attendance data, judge whether or not the policies and procedures we have in place are appropriate for whatever budget, or I'm sorry, for whatever attendance deficits we, you know, may or may not have. Taking a look at our rates of expulsion and suspension and make sure that those are appropriate and, and not, you know, detrimental to, to the student population. Data related to condition of our buildings, age of our buildings, you know, what processes do we have in place for, you know, maintenance and whatnot? And are those appropriate and being followed and, and checked? What percentage of our, you know, as we, you know, anytime we're entering into contract negotiations, we're going to have to have data related to, you know, length of tenure for our teachers, how long they've been in the district, what our pay scale looks like, how's our pay compared to other districts, you know, what's our budget implications, you know, all the data related to that.
But realize all that data is a lot of work for the administration.
Absolutely.
Huge amount of work. So what we, you know, I'm saying it again. When we set our goals, having a lot of that data as a snapshot to then let us set our goals and then that gives the direction to the superintendent to focus his administration on specific pieces. So it's just not the laundry list that you're running through.
Yeah.
But it's very specific pieces throughout the year that we're looking at.
Sure.
Because that will, because we, you know, that way, with a vote of four, at least four.
Right.
So that way, it causes the superintendent not to have to be chasing his tail.
Right. Well, Paul asked for examples. I was just giving examples, Howard.
Okay. And I mean, I think one, one of the pieces, and it's come up in different contexts tonight, is coherence, right? So right now, at this moment in time, we have a data point in our annual district goals that's different from the data point in our goal area one of the strategic plan that's different from the data point in my KIP. And it just makes my hair go, go so gray, see? Because why, how did that happen? That, that's, that's the board's responsibility to make sure that there's some kind of coherence in, in what we're looking at.
But when we're all trying to do that as seven people during a committee of the whole, it's difficult to get all that organized in, you know, over a period of, you know, one or two hours.
You know, I've asked.
And not going to 11 o'clock that I know Paul hates.
Your colleague Debbie, what's her name?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've asked her, is it, is it within the board's authority to just say, hey, we want this achievement gap half in two years? Can a board just bam, lay it down? And, and she said absolutely it is. But of course, in real life, that's not collaborative.
Goals should be aggressive but achievable.
It's, right. And so, I don't know. I think, I, I don't know what I'm trying to say here. We need to know more about everything in order to be able to set judicious and collaborative goals with Pat and learning services.
And I like what Siva said, maybe you take the first six months to sort of not only get the three of you carrying over up to speed, you know, or knowing what Jennifer just said, but then the other four newbies or three or four newbies. It's going to be a lot of work.
So Rebecca told me that I've got a seven o'clock hard stop. So I've got.
Never. Never going home.
I've got 10, I've got 10 minutes and two areas to cover here.
Let's go.
So we're almost there. So this last, second to last area here around board superintendent relations is page 19. Q1 through Q5. Again, I'm seeing more green and yellow than we did in the previous years, or last year, previous year. But we do have still some orange and red here around respecting daily executive responsibility of superintendent, creating an environment that discourages micromanagement or undermining the superintendent, providing clear set of expectations of performance, recognize superintendent as his chief executive officer, working with the superintendent in spirit of mutual respect, open communication, trust and confidence. So again, better than it was last time around, but still some room for improvement. So what say you on board superintendent relations?
Huge improvement. And it's partially because you've got the pandemic behind us where the administration, at least in the year before last, was scrambling to keep the lights on and, 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 you know, make sure at least basic instruction was, is being offered. So I think now that students are back in school, settling into a new normal, I think that's a large part of the reason for the improvement.
Okay.
And we have a very collaborative superintendent. Let's, let's just say it out loud.
Of course.
And I, I feel like I can bring, if I have a gripe, I can talk to Pat about it and we can, we can talk, you know? I, I feel like we have, all seven of us hopefully feel like we have that kind of relationship.
Absolutely.
It's, it's disturbing me that two people gave, you know, either unsatisfactory needs improvement on micromanagement. So that's something the new board needs to talk about with Pat in terms of whether micromanagement is still going on and if so, how we address that as a board collectively, team of eight. And then on Q3, where you've got three in the, the red zone, and again, you know, beating the, the dead horse, clear set of expectations of performance and personal qualities. So setting those goals and those targets up front, it takes a lot of work to really get our act together to say what those are. But if we can do that, then those expectations not only give us knowledge of where we want to be, but it also, it lets the superintendent know exactly where we are or what we expect. And that would, you know, by doing that, you would have a lot less micromanagement.
Anything else on that area in board superintendent relations? All right. Last area here, page 21, community engagement and advocacy. Again, improvement over last, last time, this was a 3.2, this time 3.45. Looking here, Q1 through Q7, I'm seeing a little bit of orange here that needs improvement area around ongoing planned program of public information about education within the district. That's Q2. Establish procedure for dissemination of information to the public, allow for citizen input, ensure the use of a variety of strategies to appropriately communicate with different stakeholders. So how have we gotten better or have we not gotten better as it relates to communicating to the public?
I, I just want to say.
As a board.
Props to our communication director who is, this has to be the world's most difficult job in this district. I myself have been the recipient and contributed to countless number of complaints from typos to just bad communication in the past. And we, we have a very good director, I think, and most notably, one who makes the topic about which she is communicating about the topic instead of about her, which is leaps and bounds better, different and better than what we had before. So to me, having somebody very good in the role and having someone selfless in the role has made all the difference.
I, I feel like we have taken pains as individuals to let the community know that we are accessible.
Well, Siva had, had the listening sessions.
He tried.
Twice now. We tried it when I first started.
And we tried.
Yeah. But people don't come.
Process-wise, it worked.
People don't come. And when they do come, it's their own thing, which is understandable. I mean, we all live in the world of our own thing, but that's, that's the challenging thing to, to balance.
The other one, if we flip the page, you know, Q12, there were three here, needs improvement. This is around communicating with government on issues dealing with public education, local, state, national. Ensure the boards of education policies, regulations, procedures, and communicate with the staffing community. That was Q10. Anything on those?
All I would say is on Q12, where three people gave it as needs improvement, I've been the main conduit. I was the only one who went to the MASB Annual Leadership Conference. People asked me.
This year you were.
This year. And people asked me, so who's going to, where, how many other board members do you have here? And I said, I'm the only one. I said, but you're leaving the board. And I said, yeah. So another issue related to that in terms of Q12 is there's a government relations committee in the OCSBA. I'm the, you know, Cynthia and I, back 10 years ago, Cynthia left, I continued. Either one of you guys or the new board member step up and, and be part of that committee or, and go to Washington DC as one option, or work with our legislators as a board, or there are many districts of the government relations committee. There are 28 districts, only about 14 or 15 usually, if, if less, attend. So there are a number that sort of, once the person leaves, I mean Rochester, Barb used to come all the time, but I think that ball passed to someone else over in Rochester and no one from Rochester is, well, I shouldn't say that. Anyway, we, we need to make sure that, sort of, we've talked about expertise in finance, subject matter experts, and we need to have that handoff and make sure that balls don't get dropped starting in January.
I mean, I think it's up to the board to decide what their priorities are, and we aren't going to be on it. So it's up to the new board to decide.
True. Oh, I'm, I'm talking to the three carryover persons.
Right. But it's not something that they have to do.
No.
Right. So again, I, I think, you know.
But I, I will tell you, and remember when Rob Glass, when Rob Glass spoke, people listened. And when Rob Glass did a memo back, I don't remember what the issue was, all of a sudden, oh my God, Bloomfield, you know, says this or that. So we have a lot of influence if we decide to use it.
So again, just something to keep in mind as you work through that onboarding process with your new board members and, you know, trying to figure out how this, how this is going to look going forward and keeping in mind the things that your outgoing board members were doing and whether you want those to continue to happen and if so, who is going to pick up the mantle on those. So just something to keep in mind as you move forward. Anything else for me tonight, for you tonight on the self-evaluation? Nice job on making, you know, what appears to be some significant improvements, at least in your own, you know, in your own evaluation from last year at this time. So that's fantastic. Hope that you all agree that you've, you know, grown as a board and as a, as a governance team in that year and, and hopefully you can continue that forward momentum with your new board members.
Yeah. And I would just suggest that as you set the goals for both the district and the board goals for next year, you use this as a reference document and really look at it and basically go through the whole thing and help to prioritize what your goals are for next year.
All right. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board president.
Yeah, one more minute.
Hey, you know what? I want to be on Rebecca's good side.
Well, thank you, Jay. I think a lot of it has to do with just a calming of the waters generally amongst all the board. So I want to thank the board for taking this last year and making things a little bit more smooth, you know? So I think that helps a lot. And I want to thank Jay for his time.
Can we take a short break before?
Yeah, we're going to take 20 minutes at least.
We're going to eat dinner.
Yep, you got dinner.
Yeah. You have dinner too.
I had dinner.
Oh. And.
See, I told you. I'm on everybody's good side.
Yeah. All right. Okay, we will adjourn until 7:20. See everyone.
Rebecca took care of me, Jen.
I thought, what happened? All right. I guess we'll get started. Howard will be back in just a second. We're moving on. No public comment tonight. We will move on to study session 5A. Have to read it? I don't, I don't think so. Which is the possible partnership with West Bloomfield Township. But I want to say, we used to set up all on the same level. We're not up here trying to big time anyone, but this is for the, we decided to be on camera for everything, so we have to be back up here. So we used to all sit on the same level, but, so we'll start off with the, everyone's got some materials from West Bloomfield. Do you, Pat, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, if I can kind of start us off. And I want to talk about a beautiful fall day. It was just before the sun came up. It was about 77 degrees. I pulled into the Pine Lake property. I noticed everything had been repaved. It was well-lit. And I came for a day of fun. I got out and I decided to hop on the walking path and I noticed that there were also little arteries breaking, kind of breaking off. So I could take a couple different paths and get all my steps in. And, you know, let's talk about 10,000 steps. The newest data says 6,000 to 7,000 steps is good. So that's kind of what I had in my pedometer. Yes, I still use a pedometer. As I was going, I noticed BBL was out and baseball game was about to start on the field. And I noticed how the lip had been removed on the field and the fence was great and the sinus was great. The grass was well-kept. And then I kept going on my walk and I heard that clickety-clack that I know so well. And that would be the sound of the pickleball courts going. There were about 12 people waiting in line to go and play and it was just an excited morning. I continued on my walk and I heard a sound and I kind of looked off over the meadow into this kind of native area with different grasses. I saw Oreo, a Blue Jay, and a Cardinal. No, not players from BBL, but the actual birds. It reminded me back to science, sixth grade science Olympiad and ornithology and how I traveled Michigan State as a young person and I wanted that medal so bad and oh, how it did not turn out because I wasn't quite where I needed to be. So this day is a day in the future. This day is possible based on a lot of work that took place. It was on June 25th of 2020 that trustee Mark Bank moved the Board of Education to mandate the creation of a Fox Hills Task Force and a Lone Pine Task Force to discuss the use of the properties as part of Lone Pine. Pine Lake was part of that. The motion carried 7-0 as a reminder. Since that time, we've had six Lone Pine, Pine Lake Task Force meetings that took place between July 2020 and June of 2022. Board member involvement, trustee Paul Colan was on it, vice president Siva Kumar were on it. These were also attended by facility and our BHS owner's rep, Paul Wills, and several members of Bloomfield Hills Schools. There were 72 different community members that participated in the task force. The task force members of BHS and WB Parks and Rec assisted with the development of a community survey in which 2,467 residents responded. There were three meetings with West Bloomfield Parks and Rec between June and October of 2022. To say that this possible partnership is a benefit to the community is an understatement. There is a great piece of land and opportunity to enhance the amenities for our community. So representing West Bloomfield Parks and Rec, to my right immediately, is Robert Brooks, who's the chairman of West Bloomfield Parks. To his right is Kelly Hyer, Recreation Superintendent for West Bloomfield Parks and Rec. And to her right is Joe Ketchum, interim executive director, who came out of his recent retirement and came back. And all three are longtime individuals, colleagues, I would say, that I've worked with. So I'll turn it for you for any opening statements you might have, and I know the board probably will have some questions.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. I want to thank the board for having us here tonight. I would like to also mention that I first met Pat when he was a young teacher at West Bloomfield and baseball coach, and he's come a long way since those days. As Pat mentioned, I, I've been with West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation for the past 30 years in multiple positions. And I did retire back in May and I was asked to come back in early September to fill an interim director spot, but I have been a part of this discussion for this property pretty much since the day you guys tore down the old school. So we have been obviously interested in this property. It meets a lot of our strategic plan goals and to create a park, just to give a little history, I actually, the only, the farthest east we've ever had any parks technically was the Walnut Lake Elementary School. When I first got here 30 years ago, we built and maintained two tennis courts on that property. I don't, I don't know if any of the board members remember those or anybody knows that. And we actually did try to buy that school a long time ago. But we've had very little presence on the east side of West Bloomfield, pretty much nothing east of, middle of Orchard Lake Road. So obviously this week meets one of our goals to be on the east side. It also is one of our goals to obtain and conserve parkland and natural features, provide an increase in walkability and bikeability of local communities and/or increasing outdoor recreational activities within the township. This purpose aims to increase the health and quality of life of local residents of all ages. That park, that former school site technically sits as a park right now. It has trails. It has tennis courts. It has basketball courts. It has some playgrounds, but it's in rough shape and needs some TLC. West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation, one thing I will say about us as a department over my 30 years that we've been here, we are, we are an award-winning department. We provide what I would say some of the top parks in the state, recreation programs in the state, and we know how to do this. This is what we do for a living. This is what we live and breathe and passionate about. So that's kind of where I'm at. I think everybody has the conceptual plan. I don't know if, Kelly, would you like to mention anything or talk? Or you want me to continue to give?
You can continue.
Okay.
Just, you know, it came a little late because it was the middle of the afternoon, so I don't know whether the board members.
Had a chance to review it or not.
Okay. Well, the conceptual plan is, is kind of, we had, we, we did meet with Pat Watson and a couple of representatives from the, the school to come out and look and do a walkthrough with our design team. We have a design team. It used to be Living Lab. They came out, walked the site, did some preliminary design work with what's existing there. I actually met with Goddard Coatings, which is a tennis and basketball resurfacing company yesterday, and we are looking forward to getting some prices, but really it looks like the tennis courts and the basketball courts could be easily renovated for, you know, better tennis facilities and obviously pickleball courts. And we might even be able to keep a basketball court on that pickleball area if we, if so desired. As you'll see also in this concept design, we look to eliminate possibly the soccer field and create more of a meadow area. Soccer for us in West Bloomfield is definitely the, the. might have been an issue in the past with the neighborhoods with people parking on the street behind the soccer field. But we'd look at to make that into more of a native meadow area and include some more trails. Obviously, in between the pickleball courts and playground area, we'd look to expand some more meadows. Just to give you a little brief history, what we've done in our park systems over the years is that we used to mow everything. That was the 70s, 80s model. You just mowed, mowed, mowed. Over the course of the last 30 years, we have looked back at that practice, and we have basically taken our mowing and reduced it and created more natural areas that are easy, two things. You don't have to mow them, you don't have to maintain them, and they also provide natural habitat and beauty. And obviously, in these meadow areas, we'd look to put native plantings and flowers and stuff like that. So that's kind of where we're at right now with the concept plan. Oh, also, within that concept plan, we would look at the parking lots. Right off the bat, there is some need for some repairs in the parking lots. We'd have to look at some possible lighting in those parking lots. Signage and gates. We, at every one of our parks, we have gates in which we operate, and we do open and close the gates daily. So this would be a situation in which that park would not be, once dusk hits, our rules are we shut gates. So we would definitely be monitoring that. Whether or not we would open and close that in the winter time, I don't know, because I don't know what the use would be in the winter time, but we'd look at that. We do not maintain trails in the winter time. We don't plow them. They, they are natural. So if we had this site was open in the winter time, those would become natural sites. The trails would end up either being cross-country skiers, I'm guessing, dog walkers and users would do that, but we do not plow and salt trails in the winter time. So that's kind of what, that, where we're at with that. We're in the preliminary aspects of getting cost estimates. Like I said, evaluating existing amenities and phasing projects for tennis, pickleball courts, parking lot renovations, staff and operations. Technically, you know, right now, we, we operate 12 park sites, about 600 acres of parkland. We have about a $5 million budget that we work off of, and that we do have our own infrastructure needs and wants, and so we do have to look into the cost effectiveness of this proposal and to get some real, real hard numbers to know how, if we can afford to operate this. Part of that, too, would be then going into our use agreement. One of the things I say, we state in here is a minimum of 20 years. The reason we bring that up, right now, we're in the, we have a bunch of grant opportunities. We need to have site control to get grants for this property, and the DNR requires a 20-year minimum for that site control. So obviously, if we're going out for, you know, 300, 400, $500,000 grants, the state does not want to give us the money if 10 years from now, you decide to sell the property. And we would have to, somehow, somebody would have to repay the DNR, because once you do that, you have to pay back your, 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 your grant situation there. So that's where we're kind of looking at with the use agreement and for capital improvements. Obviously, the commission would not want to invest money into a property, you know, and five years from, after putting that initial investment, lose that property. So there's some concerns there. And then, obviously, looking at funding, we don't know where the school is when it comes to what they might want to contribute to this or can contribute to this. We would also look at possible donors, if there's any donors in the community, and then obviously grants and obviously our parks villages. Timeline expectations for this, I think, quite honestly, we really don't have a timeline right now. I think we're in the beginning procedures of looking at cost analysis and to see what the agreement could possibly be between the two entities. So we would not, you know, I'm not saying that we couldn't do this, you know, by June. I don't know, but those are the things that we have to look at internally, see if we can, can accomplish that. However, I will say, just walking the site and looking at it, I would say that minimally, we could do some real quick upgrades, just specifically, I know on the maintenance end, I'm sure the, the, the maintenance department for the school would, that would like to get out of mowing the property, picking up garbage and maintaining such, such things. But just simple things like the playgrounds need new playground surfacing. That's not a difficult thing. The parking lot could use some patchwork. That could be something that could be simply fixed. We could look at, you know, the condition of the baseball field. We're experts of that. We can do that internally. That's not a problem. I, like I said, I've already reached out to Goddard Coatings to get some quotes for the tennis courts. So there's things that we could do instantly. As far as bathroom facilities, a bathroom facility is a very costly investment, so initially, right off the bat, we would probably put Porta-Jons out there. Our Porta-Jons are serviced weekly, and our staff hits them just about daily. So when I say with their service, that means they're pumped and cleaned weekly, but our staff cleans them almost on a daily basis and maintains them. So they wouldn't be sitting there for weeks on end and become nasty. We actually do inspections of our parks on a daily basis. So that's kind of summing up what, and I'm, I'll ask my colleagues if there's anything they would like to add.
Thank you for having us here at your board. As Pat so generously said, I'm Robert Brooks. I'm the chair of the West Bloomfield Parks. I've been on that commission for about nine years, serving our community. And quite frankly, this property, be it in West Bloomfield and be it the surveys that have been taken, as well as looking through the eyes of our residents that are in that area, this is a great property that they would love to see a great park on. And our commission is very, very passionate about making sure our parks are second to none. And as you know, we were written up in Money Magazine as one of the top 23 in the nation of a Parks and Rec commission and bringing people into West Bloomfield. So we would love to have the opportunity to serve the same residents in some sense that you're serving in your schools that would have a park that they would really enjoy. And so what my staff is showing here, I think that the vision that Pat gave at the beginning is something that's achievable. And so with that said, my commission, in talking to each of the commission members separately, support anything that my staff here is presenting, as well as would want to move forward if you were to give us the opportunity to do something with this property on some sort of a long-term lease. So I'm here showing that support as well, and I thank you again for having us.
All right, thank you. My name is Kelly Hyer, and I'm the recreation superintendent for West Bloomfield Parks. And we want to leave today with some dialogue, perhaps some ideas, if there's further research we can start on, really the expectations of the next steps. And as Joe said, that we are willing and open to moving fast, but I also know that there's a lot of hesitancy on the staff end. Okay, how is this going to look like on the daily operation side of things? So we really want to get a feel for what the expectation is, whether or not the next step still questions, what do we need to discuss? Also, on the, our little outline today, we wanted to bring up our marketing and communications plan, public relations. How does this look like probably driving from you to the community so we can introduce this to West Bloomfield Townships that we are talking about this? We've, we've talked a little bit publicly in the past park commission meetings, but really, this is brand-new concept. And then furthermore, would be our neighborhood task force meetings. If that was something that we could activate, continuing to hold those meetings, get their questions and concerns addressed before we go any further. So those are the last thoughts that we had for today.
You want to go around with some questions?
You want to go around?
Yeah, I'll start.
I have a lot, but I'm only going to ask one.
Okay, one question at a time.
Yeah. I guess my question, my first question is, so is the agreement you're looking for from Bloomfield Hills Schools a long-term, a 20-year or more lease agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, first of all, you know, if we are going to look for any grant opportunities, that's a requirement, is that we have to show some sort of control of the property. And then secondly, obviously, for us to put our resources to something, we, a return on investment would be, you know, we would look at that as, you know, the opportunity to, you know, we're going to put money into this. If we, if we don't get a lease like that, then I would, I would assume we would want, if we, we might not even go forward, or if we did, there'd have to be some contingencies on return on investment. You know, we put $500,000 in the park, and we only get five years out of it, we're probably going to want to have some return on investment on that.
In, in the lease agreement, you'll honor some of the work, all of the suggestions, some of the, whatever's feasible, the information obtained from two years of committee work?
So the plan you see is hitting the highlights of what was shared with the community. So those were the focal points, based on what the community feedback and whatever we wanted. So those have been incorporated. Another thing that I have had the conversations about, if this agreement moves forward, is also having built in the right of first refusal. If we do sell the property down the road, that they would have the opportunity to purchase that at market value and have the first right to do that.
I think what Lisa's asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, is there's these things that may or may not get done based on grants, and how does that look in a lease? If we give you control of the property, how many of these things can we demand get done, essentially? You know what I mean? So like, we give you 20 years' control, and then none of these things get done. How does that?
Right, and I'm also thinking conversely, the district has restrictions on naming. We have restrictions, we have order of priority of usage for Bloomfield teams get property first, the fields first, for example. Are those things going to be honored, or will West Bloomfield residents have priority?
Well, normally, we, when we go into, that would be part of the lease agreement. Use, the use agreement for the, I think it's your BBL, you know, that would be honored, just like we honor Lakeland, Little League, and NFWB in our own parks. I mean, that would definitely be something that we could easily honor with your BBL. Like I said, we're looking at the soccer field, probably not as a usable space. We would look at the, put it into a more natural state rather than having that, because we don't have, we don't, we don't see the growth in soccer right now. I don't know where you guys are at on the Bloomfield Hills side, but in the West Bloomfield side, we've, we have, we have space, obviously.
And maybe this is a phased thing where we say, okay, within the first five years, these are the amenities we're going to focus on. These are the priorities. We would have to build in some expectations, of course, and also, we've talked about how would we do the tiered level of services, because oftentimes in West Bloomfield Township services, it's township residents, non-residents. But we would extend, extend anything happening at this property to Bloomfield Hills homeowners, school district homeowners, because we just thought you would fold in what we would consider a resident if we were to do any paid services like pickleball court programming, anything on the tennis courts, if we were to do a pavilion here and do pavilion rentals. So those are some examples that we've already talked about.
Okay. I mean, I just, I wanted to say to you, I, I don't want to go over my one question limit, but under the umbrella of the lease, which I realize is a big umbrella, one of our elementary schools is losing baseball fields. I don't imagine we're going to have everybody move that, but if everybody shifts, for example, a little bit west, will you guarantee that our students still have priority over the fields?
So we, we've talked about that at our meeting. So Mike Cowdery, Avis Nager, and Mark White have been involved all along the way. So BBL is given preference for the fields, and they picked the fields first, and that was the conversation we had. Mark White's not really placing the use soccer there anymore. Concerns from the community that everyone's parking behind the street, like said, forward. So it makes sense, we're not really using that for soccer, that it becomes more of a nature area. So that's something. Also, keep in mind, this is also an opportunity for cost avoidance for us. We don't have the funds, and I'm not sure in the future we're going to have the funds to add anything, let alone maintain it. So that's why it was so important that we walked the property. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs that need to be done. Any money we sink into that, we're taking away from our other properties at this point. So this is, so what are we trying to achieve? The way we looked at, we're trying to achieve a win-win situation, where we provide greater amenities for our community, that'll help us recruit and retain families. It's a great partnership. I should hear from Kelly and Joe, they would extend it out to Bloomfield Hills residents, that there was an opportunity to do things jointly. And it's also a great cost avoidance for us, to be honest, and put more money back into the general fund for other repairs that are going to take place at our other properties. Not to mention Lone Pine's going to come offline. Not to mention Fox Hills is going to come offline. So this might be an opportunity to start this relationship now, look at other endeavors and things in the future that we might be able to do. Any type of lease agreement, we would work through Clark Hill. We would share it then with West Bloomfield Township. Their attorneys would look at it. Once they're happy and the board's happy if we were to move forward, then we would have a signed agreement. So what I'm looking for at the end of the night is for you to say, Pat, yes, keep working with West Bloomfield Parks and Rec, work with Clark Hill, see if we can do this expeditiously, get a deal in place that's a win-win for our community, for our districts, for our students. Bring it back to us after they've looked at it and they feel comfortable to move forward. Let us have the opportunity to look at it in detail and then make a final decision. And then, yes, Kelly, we would work with our marketing department, and it would just be a joint venture. You know, it would be a collaborative process that benefits everyone involved. This was a task that was assigned to me by the board as well.
I'd like to let everyone ask their questions, just for the basic purpose of maybe coming up with something that people haven't thought about. Siva, do you have any questions?
I do. Well, thanks to West Bloomfield Parks and Rec for putting this proposal together. I do have an internal question for Tina, Jake, and Pat. Did we get this property valued? Or to find out what the property is worth?
We have not.
Like an assessment, you're saying?
All along, the conversations that have occurred with the board prior is about land banking properties for future use. And, you know, one of the things we shared when we passed the bond is we were not looking to sell these properties. We were looking to create green spaces and other opportunities with our community. There's always the worst-case scenario where you may have to sell one of your properties, but that's something that the board decided we weren't looking to do that, that we want to provide more opportunities since especially parks are somewhat limited throughout this area.
All right, thank you. That was my question. All right, Tina.
So we, when the district embarked on a master property planning process, which was several years ago now, back in 2015, between all of us, we, we have a lot of history behind us, and there was a market value that was extrapolated about 2.2 million, but again, that was back in 2015. But we have not done a recent appraisal.
All right, thanks, Tina. Jennifer?
As the only West Bloomfield resident, Siva's coming soon on the board. Thank you so much. I, I love living in West Bloomfield. I'm on the trail almost every day. I think you guys, I can't say enough about how amazing it is to have these resources and the doggy bags, which you will need on this property, because, and you may get, so I want to be on the neighborhood task force volunteer. You may get pushback because people have basically come to see this property as their own personal dog-walking pavilion. So I don't bring my own dog there because I'm on the trail, but everyone I know is, is on the trail. I, I live across the street in the Pine Lake Estate sub. So my, my concerns are, you know, minutiae, which is, I, I don't know how big the parking lot is, because frankly, I'm never in there, but I'm concerned about people parking on the road, especially during the warm months, because so many kids cross Long Lake to get to Pine Lake, because our subs have the, the beach there, right? So it's, you know, people drive very fast on Long Lake, and it's just, you know, it's scary on a, on a good day. So I would be concerned about having a line of cars. It's not a blind area of the road, but, but still, it's, it gets a lot of foot traffic. And that light at Long Lake and Orchard Lake, the cycle time, so heading, what, west? Okay, the cycle time is so long, I, I would ask for that to be changed at rush hour, like between 3:30 and 7:30, so that the, the Long Lake people can get onto Orchard Lake, because otherwise, you're going to be backed up to Middle Belt, and it's going to be, because I imagine that more people will come from West Bloomfield, and they'd all be trying to leave that way until they figure out how to get through the neighborhoods to Lone Pine. So I would ask that that cycle time be, you know, decreased. like between 3:30 and 7:30, so that the, the Long Lake people can get onto Orchard Lake. Because otherwise, you're going to be backed up to Middle Belt and it's going to be, because I imagine that more people will come from West Bloomfield and they'd all be trying to leave that way until they figure out how to get through the neighborhoods to Lompine. So I would ask that that cycle time be, you know, decreased, increased, whatever you have to do to prevent that backup. But it's a, it's a great space and I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Michelle?
So one of my questions was about timeline, but we'll have that eventually. So that's great to hear. So when I looked at the image, thank you for the guided imagery visual earlier, Pat. I was looking at the flex, the flexible space. What's, is that pavilion space? Like what's, what's, what does flexible space mean? Like what does that mean?
Flex open space is basically where people can take their dog, go for a walk, they can throw a frisbee, they can set up a volleyball court or a net. It's basically unregulated space. You know, obviously, I think one of the things is that once we do get into a park like this and we find out the use and what people are using it and we, we do some neighborhood meetings and find out what they want, and we follow that use and then usually we make, we do make changes, obviously, along the way. Many of our parks have evolved over the years. But right now, that would be a flex open area because I think, I was just there yesterday and I saw at least three different individuals with their dogs out there and that tended to be the area where they took their dogs. We are not a proponent of putting in a dog park. We do have an existing dog park in our facility and we find that's a whole nother issue that brings problems and stuff. So we feel like we're serving the, the dog park people who want to go get to a dog park. We already have one. So we do enjoy, I mean, we do like to see people bring their dogs out. Obviously, we put up signage about the dog leash laws and the picking up laws. And we do try to regulate that. Our police department will regulate that, too. But that's really what a flex open space is, is an area. And like you said, possibly down the line, that would be an area where you'd look to put a shelter so that people could rent it for picnics and family reunions and birthday parties, which is what we've done in most of our parks.
And then that's, and then also around the perimeter, it's walking space? Is that?
Yes. If you see all those, those trails, those are, those are walking spaces. One of the biggest things that we, the push for a lot of the grants and our DNR through the state of Michigan, the Ralph Wilson Foundation, is connectivity to trails. And what this does, our, our, our West Bloomfield Trail is probably about a quarter a mile down the road. And bringing these trails up to the front, up to the safety path on Long, or Long Lake Road, brings them down to our trail. That actually leads right down to our trail. So it's a natural fit to bring those connectivity from those neighborhoods into the park and then down to our trail. Or vice versa, people from the trail, you know, somebody's doing their pickleball. They decide to ride from, you know, a subdivision in Orchard Lake, actually. They can get onto our trail, ride up the trail, ride up, and they don't ever have to get on a major road. Just so you guys know, we are looking to put hawke lights along our trail at what we call Orchard Lake Number Two, which is the trail entrance between Pine Lake and Orchard Lake and what we call Orchard Lake Number Three, which is up by St. Mary's High School. So we're trying to make the trail even more safe and more travelable for, or safely so people can travel that trail. So that's, that's the goal, is to get connectivity between these neighborhoods, to our parks, to our trail, and then throughout the, and then through the township.
And we also shared the survey results from your spring survey with our, the contractor who did this. And we emphasized how important it was to do a main pathway and then some smaller nature trails based on the feedback that we read in the survey.
I like that the trails that you do have have the markers. So at least also, as you're walking, you know you've done a mile. I think that's exciting for people, at least it is for me.
And one of the things I will say, we do have, at Marsh Bank Park and Drake Sports Park, we have loop trails. And those trails get a ton of use. I mean, they are constantly, Drake is like a highway at nine o'clock in the morning, six o'clock at night with just walkers. And especially when COVID hit, and now especially, we still have a lot of people working from home, our lunch hours, our parks are busy. There are people out there. So obviously, when you put in a trail system as a loop system, you'll just get people, you'll get, you'll get morning people, night people, and they'll come out here and they'll just walk that trail and walk that loop. It gives them a safe opportunity that they can park a car, ride a bike, and do a, do a loop and they can do, you know, their mile or two miles or 6,000 steps.
Can I just say a quick thing while we're on safety? Somebody mentioned locking the gate at night. I'm in favor of that for sure. A lot of the young people in the community are still kind of traumatized by the murder. It comes up in conversation. And granted, that was a weird one-off situation, but I think minimizing the opportunity for vehicles to be there after dark is a, is a good idea.
I would also, I would also emphasize that I would think that once it becomes a West Bloomfield Park or, you know, represented by the park, the West Bloomfield Police would make normal runs through there. We could also work with the city of Orchard Lake. We have a great working relationship with them and possibly see some patrols presence from them.
Thank you. I'm not going to exceed by eight questions.
Any questions, Paul?
Yeah, well, questions, comments. So, so yeah, so thank you, Pat. Thank you, West Bloomfield. I know one of the things, you know, I was heavily involved in discussion of the bond that we would keep those properties as parks and we wouldn't sell it. That was one of the things I know, doing the whole tour, that we focused on. And then, yes, in terms of, you know, I was on those task forces, you know, from the beginning, looking at the survey feedback was, I know someone brought up a, we kept, we brought up, you know, like a dog park and we realized that wasn't practical. You know, for the, I mean, obviously, people, you know, who want dogs, you know, just, you know, just a couple of things, just a couple of comments. And, you know, I noticed in your presentation, one of the things I know is a common theme, we, you say baseball field, can that be turned into a multi-purpose field? That seemed to be a, a high to use for soccer and other event, you know, can that? I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that was always, that was on the survey as a high one and that was always a feedback.
I would just venture to say it's a pretty small field. So it's not saying that you couldn't play some smaller soccer out there, but I don't even, it's really short field and I think you'd be hard pressed to make it into a multi-purpose field.
And then, I guess the second thing was, and you mentioned these, the trails, and I'm glad Michelle can have the one mile mark, you know, but can that be, you know, other feedback was, we don't have it here and we have a big high school and middle school cross-country program. Can that be a cross-country site that we can use in Bloomfield since we always end up traveling elsewhere?
Well, that'd be interesting because we'd have to measure it, probably get somebody, your cross-country coach maybe could go out there, maybe meet with him one day, him or her, one day and see what they would do to do a course there. One problem with cross-country, I'll just throw it out there, we used to have cross-country meets at Marsh Bank Park. West Bloomfield used to be our main, Orchard Lake, same area as I'm, West Bloomfield used to be the main users there, is that if you're going to do meets there, they probably only need to be dual meets because you don't have enough parking. When you start getting into district matches, regional matches, invitationals, but obviously for a practice course or possibly a dual meet, you'd probably be fine.
Yeah, practice, because I know right now, the team practices at Nature Center. And I don't know, you know, they probably would want that, but, and we have a big middle school. And then, and you noted, I noticed in your presentation, one of the big things, I know Pat's big, everyone seems to be big. I know it just popped up the last year, obviously, pickleball. And I know our courts are maxed out, people go BHMS at night. So is there going to be, so you said, there's going to be lighting there at night?
We would like to look at lighting. We, we technically don't, so we have one sports park that has lights and that's Drake Sports Park. That's the only park that we go past dusk. I would be very leery of initially putting in lights for pickleball in that community because you're pretty close to some houses and pickleball is loud. So I don't know.
Depending on how you play. No.
I mean, you know, so I would, I would venture to say, I don't know if you really need to have lights. We, our pickleball courts are at Drake Sports Park. We do not have them lit up yet. Our tennis courts, we've never put lights on and we don't seem to have an issue, obviously, with daylight savings time. You, you know, you've got pretty good daylight till nine, 10 o'clock at night in the summertime. So I think, I would, I would be very leery about putting lights in.
Because you want people to leave it at the time they're supposed to leave.
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, that's fair. And again, thank you very much because, again, I've seen you would have to put in $580,000. I, I was in a lot of the meetings. It's very, very difficult and, and we're at risk if we don't do this of it being vacant and we having to put money to stopkeep it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming today and thank Pat and West Bloomfield Parks and Rec for working on this. This has been a resource of land that has been underutilized for a number of years now. And it, it needs, it needs to be more than just a whole bunch of grass and parking lot and, and some older playground equipment. I'm assuming, based upon the fact that this is a lease and not a sale of property, that the district has determined that we might in the future need to use that property. Based on that assumption, what I think that I, as a board member, would want to see is a write-up in writing of what we potentially could use it for in the future and a timeline as to when that might be, such that we can determine from our board point of view that the 20-year minimum, which makes sense from your standpoint in the grants and for the, and for the understanding that, you know, you can do the investment and not have it, you know, the rug pull out from under you, absolutely. But we on Bloomfield Hills standpoint need to have the assurance from the board stand, as the board and the administration, that that 20 years is, you know, that we wouldn't be sitting here 12 years in and say, boy, oh, boy, I wish we hadn't done that. Because we have this need. Obviously, what can happen in the future, we can't predict. But I think that using Plant Moran Cressa and the facilities people and, you know, it's really seeing what potentially we could use that land for in the future and that a 20-year time horizon is reasonable.
I can answer that for you right now, Trustee Baron, because we had this.
No, no, I don't, I don't need it right now, sir.
We had this conversation back in 2020 as well. And what we share with the community, there were two potential reasons we would dispose of the property or use it differently if it didn't go to parks. One, if we needed it financially, we would sell it. Another thing we share with the community is that we wanted to landbank it in case there is growth in the future. That's a great site for an elementary school that's already there. The other thing that's so attractive about this that we've talked about is we know Lompine's about to come offline in a couple of years. We know that's a great site for an elementary school as well. So by moving forward this and using Pine Lake, we still have a property in Lompine, which is very, you know, close as well, that if we decided to do nothing but plant grass there and landbank it, landbank it, then we could build an elementary school. But those are the only two things, a future elementary school or the sale of property because we needed it financially.
Okay. So needing it financially, you know, knock on wood, we don't need that. And Tina would help us predict that going into the future, doing a five-year plan, do a 20-year plan. Wonderful, Tina, I just gave you an assignment. But, but more for, to what Pat said, if it is for a future elementary school.
Potentially, but Lompine also serves that purpose, which makes these almost interchangeable and one usable amount.
If I could finish, sir, thank you. So what that then means is Plant Moran, using your other hat, which is our enrollment projections, goes out six or seven years, maybe we want to try to prognosticate a little in the future to say, for the 20-year time horizon, to say, you know, is there a possi, is there a possibility that we might need it before 20 years? So, and again, and I didn't mean to cut you off, sir, but what I'm looking for is a document so that it can go in the file, so the boards 15, 20 years from now can pull that out of the file and be able to say, here were the assumptions that they had, they did their due diligence. Obviously, we don't have 20, you know, we, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't predict everything, but we did our due diligence and said that, no, we think that 20-year timeframe is reasonable, we don't think that we will need that property. So that's number one. The second question is, well, again, I use my one question unless you want me to continue, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So what is the understanding between the two administrations here in terms of, we have a lease, but is it a dollar a year lease? Or is there some expectation of an actual lease cost to the West Bloomfield, which would inure to Bloomfield Hills Schools?
So our discussion has been a dollar per year.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
That wasn't brought up, but, and I, I would totally agree with that. But that is something that I think is, is useful to know about. Is there any expectation on the 800, or the $900,000 that you would be looking? So put it this way, from an operating cost or a capital cost? Obviously, you have your hands out, obviously, for that. But is there any expectation that we, in order to enter into this lease, we must put some sort of either capital or operating cost into it? Or would this, because right now, we're mowing the lawns and doing some minor maintenance that Jake does. But I'm assuming, given what we've talked about, that once, you know, we do the cutoff, that basically, dollar a year, basically break, you know, no cost, no, no revenue going back and forth, and that we have no operating cost either, other than maybe insurance and we'd have to work out that deal.
Well, I would say, right now, we're in the exploratory aspect of this for operational costs. We're looking at, you know, the capital costs that we would have to invest in this. But right now, obviously, we, we'd love to get some help from the school district, but we also.
But that's not an ex, that's not a requirement.
That's not a requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
I only have one other question.
Thank you.
If we're going around a second time.
I did, well, I wanted to comment on one thing that Howard had said earlier. First, I want to say thank you for coming tonight. And with regard to this lease and the cost in the 20 years, I think Clark Hill and West Bloomfield's attorneys can come up with a structure that will say, hey, you know, if for some reason, 10 years out, you need the property back, you got to give us X amount of dollars from the sale of the property. Right, there'd be some sort of, and I, I think all of those contingencies can be worked out. Lisa?
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I also want to thank you for the proposal and for coming to talk to the board tonight. My, my only question is, that particular property has been, I think we probably, you know, talked this in excess, but it has a lot of deed restrictions. Have we explored what they are? And, okay.
We, we did that about eight years ago. Those got.
That was actually the lease.
Exactly.
Ah, okay. All right, good. I mean, I, I think I, I kind of did know that, but good to put it on the record in case anyone's wondering that, too. Thank you.
That was an issue a decade ago.
Yeah.
Or 15, 20 years ago.
But it comes up a lot because.
We're not communicating as well to the community.
No questions?
You're going to love me by the time this is over. I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, in terms of trail access, bike access, the sidewalk that goes all the way from Pine Lake to Middle Belt on the south side of Long Lake is in bad condition. It's got cracks. So if the, if the vision is to, you know, bring people from both directions, it would be awesome to get that sidewalk repaired and smooth for bicycles.
Repeat that for me, please. Which, which side of the road?
It's the south side of Long Lake. There's a continuous sidewalk between where the trail comes up and the light at Middle Belt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that now the township supervisor's responsibility?
That is actually the township supervisor's responsibility.
Put it on his budget.
Talk to Mr. Kaplan, I'm sure.
Talk to Mr. Kaplan.
I will text him at the end of our meeting.
And just so everyone, I mean, that is a, yes, the township has a safe, what they call them, safety path, safety path millage that does maintain those. It is a recurring issue in the township, but obviously, if we put a park in there, we would definitely push to see those connectivities, those sidewalks and safety paths improved.
Does the safety, does the township have a safety path millage?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And, because the Bloomfield Township has the same thing and we've had it for like 15 or years or so, and little, year by year, more of it's going to maintenance and less of it's for new construction.
And actually, what happens in West Bloomfield, probably the same thing in Bloomfield, is any new development is responsible for installing in front of them and then the township will maintain it after. maintain it after that, but-
Because our strategic plan for safety paths in Bloomfield Township is not fully completed?
And same thing in West Bloomfield.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
Sorry, could I have a follow-up question to Jennifer?
Sure.
So, just following up in Jennifer's train of thought here, you had talked about connecting it to the West Bloomfield Trail or the Crown and Liver Trail. Would that pathway or sidewalk be also part of West Bloomfield Township's responsibility? Or would that be Parks and Rec?
Where at?
The connection from this park-
Yep.
-to the trail?
That, so, the connection down is part of West Bloomfield Township. Once it gets to our trail, which actually is at the top, we actually did a major improvement to the, to the ramp, basically, that goes from the Long Lake down to the trail. It's been, that was improved probably six, seven years ago. So, it's in really good shape from there, but the sidewalk, obviously, going on the, towards Middlebelt is what we're talking about as being in rough shape.
Yeah, it's all, it's all the same sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all one thing.
Yeah.
And it's very narrow.
Yep. Yeah, any of those kind of improvements, and sometimes that's-
When you have a kid on a bike, you like to be next to them, not behind them.
Some of that's determined by the easements, but they should minimally be six foot at the minimum, so.
Thank you. So, Pat, what, what have we determined that we need going forward tonight?
I just need to know, I have the support of the board to move forward, to keep working with Robert, with Kelly, with Joe, with Clark Hill, to try to get this partnership moving forward. And then bring back to the board, if we reach an agreement, what a potential partnership would be in writing, and then have the board decide whether or not they want to sign off on it after we've had those additional conversations.
What type of timeline would you be looking at, sir?
Fairly quick, the sooner the better. This has been two years in the working, of course, I'd have to work with them, but these are also people I, you know, I've worked with Mr. Brooks, you know, for 20 something years. Joe and I came in pretty much together, worked with Kelly, so these are old relationships. So, I mean, this-
Something that maybe you could get by the beginning of the year? By January?
Don't want to put that type of timetable on it, because it depends on, you know, how all the parties feel. There might be some adjustments you want sent back, some other considerations.
No, no, but that first, that initial blush, something we can get in January, or the new board can get in January, February?
We'll move as accurately and as quickly and expeditiously as we can, whether that's in two weeks, two months, or four months. They also will need to go back and say, "Yeah, we went to the board meeting, they definitely interested."
And they have to get approval from the board, too.
Well, great, what does that mean? What does Bloomfield Hills want? Are they going to put it in writing? What are the parameters? The same things you're going to want to have here. But everyone's dedicated to getting this done, right? It's a win for the communities we serve. It's a win in so many facets. And again, this is June of 2020. We're still trying to make sure we follow through on the things we told our community we were going to do. We told them we were going to look at the properties and see what opportunities were available for partnerships. This is the first one. Other conversations have continued, they haven't led us as far in Bloomfield Township. If they do, I'll gladly bring that back.
The reason I'm, I'm pressing this is, it would be wonderful if we could get all the paperwork taken care of during the winter, and therefore, starting in end of March, beginning of April, start putting, you know, moving dirt or, or, you know, asphalt or whatever it is. It would be lovely.
I think they're just looking for whether we want them to explore the relationship going further without a formal vote, just an informal.
Sure.
And so, if that's what you're looking for, I would want you to explore the relationship further.
Thank you.
Michelle's had her hand up, so.
You have the floor.
I think, I just, to your, to your point, obviously, there's a survey, and the residents want this, and we have one resident on our board who is ecstatic, to say the least. But my question goes to, when we do have the report, and one of the things that came up was the timeline, to my original question, if there is a funding scale that needs to be like, "Okay, this year, we're going to start with this project or that project," can we include that timeline in, within the process? Like, if things are going to be like, in year 12 or year 25, 20, oh, I gave you a longer lease. You know what I mean, Pat? Will that also be included as a breakdown for us, like, timeline-wise?
We can. So, Tina and Jake helped me remember this, because I'm inviting you to the meeting with Clark Hill as well, FYI. So, I think Joe would be like, if you take over the property within the first 12 months, could you, if it hasn't been done already, patch the entrance? You know, some of those low-hanging fruit things.
Yeah, what we would look at, low-hanging fruit would be, obviously, to patch some of the driveway, parking lot, make it safe, look at the tennis courts, pickleball, those would be the first-
Add porta-potties, so there is a restroom.
Add porta-potties. Add garbage. Obviously, we'd be there on a regular basis. We'd look at the playgrounds and determine which, if any of them are sell-eligible. If the, if we choose one that is safe, we've got certified playground inspectors on staff, we'd look at, obviously, cleaning those up, putting in proper safety surface, look at some of the other, I know there's some exercise equipment out there that we either, A, don't think it's going to be usable or doesn't get used, B, it is usable and we'll save it. You know, those would be, we could come up with a list of priorities that we would look at. Obviously, the first, one of the easiest things that we can do is fix up the baseball field and get that-
Yeah.
-in a much better shape. It's a very cost-effective, like I said, we have the expertise to do that. You know, so, right off the bat, you would see consistent mowing, garbage being picked up, porta-potties there, presence of park staff there on a daily basis. I think you would see, you know, what, we would, we had obviously put in a sign. We talk about signage, I mean, we would probably call this, I'm not going to go out on a limb, but probably the Pine Lake Park. I mean, we're not, we're, we have, and we have uniform signs. I think if anybody looks on our website, you'll see, everything is branded with our branding, our signs are classic-looking. We did a sign project probably four, five years ago. And so, we would obviously install a sign, we'd look at gates, and start operating it as a park. This is nothing unusual for us, just giving an example, when I first started here, the trail, the West Bloomfield Trail was basically an abandoned railroad that they had taken out the tracks and the, and the ties, and we had a dirt parking lot, and we maintained it like that for a couple of years while we went for funding and was able to get grants to do the funding, to do those projects, and to move forward to develop that part, that park and the nature preserve into what it is today. So, you know, it's, it's, some things don't happen overnight, but I will tell you this, you would have the presence of our park staff and our expertise there on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Howard, two very quick things. One, you talked about signage, I hadn't thought about this. As you start working through the details on it, having maybe at the bottom, some reference to Bloomfield Hills Schools, because it is still our physical property, number one. And number two, Robert, if you could say hello to my good friend, John Eric, that we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So, I'm going to move forward. I'll follow up with internal team, and then with Robert, with Joe, and Kelly as well.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, write down my name for your neighborhood committee.
Our new, our new favorite resident.
Jennifer, let me, Jennifer will put a bench in your name or something like that.
Right. It's hilarious, because as much time as I spend here there, I never walk there.
You will, you will.
I will.
Maybe we'll name the pickleball field after Jennifer.
Right.
The Matlow Field.
Thanks so much. Thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Oh, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, he's moving in.
I already run on the trail all the time.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the capital planning update discussion with Paul Wills and Jake, Tina and Dave. Can kind of perhaps do B and C together, which is the sinking fund, or they separate?
I agree, that's a great point. I think 5B and 5C do go together. So, typically, for the committee meetings, we understand that we provide the materials, and then all of you review them and ask questions. However, given the significant amount of handouts, when you combine both, some of the PDFs were snippeted into the PowerPoint that Paul and his team put together, and so, we're offering, if the board agrees, to go through the slides just at a very high level. Presumably, everyone looked at it, we thought it might be helpful to just go through the slides, we picked out the highlights from all those PDFs I provided. Would that be agreeable? Yes?
Sure.
And then ask questions at the end, correct?
Yes, or throughout. I guess that is up to you, how you want to take it. Because as we go through things, it might be easier as we go through the slides, but we'd have to manage the time, so I'll leave that up to the president.
We need to get the displays up.
Now, you've got the PDF, and so you're going to use the PDF that you have, and you can follow along.
Let's do the questions at the end, because sometimes we get bogged down with the questions in the middle.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So, which one are we open?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Masick, and good evening, everybody. Again, Paul Wills with Plant Moran Cressa. With me this evening is also David Goldman, our senior consultant, who's done a lot of the work of the facility piece. In terms of the overview, as Tina mentioned, we're really going to take it in three parts. We kind of have the financial background of the sinking fund itself, some of the updated millage rates relative to a 10-year capital plan. David's going to get into more of the specifics of kind of a pullout of each of those 10-year capital plans, both for technology as well as for facilities. And then lastly, just some next steps going forward. Take a look at slide three. I'm determined, David's going to kind of walk us through the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Paul, I want to thank you for having us. So, we reviewed the whole district, you know, in the lens of tenure from various aspects of capital improvement needs. You know, we looked at technology needs, facility needs, and operational needs, and included in that operational is like athletic, performing arts, equipment, uniforms, maintenance equipment, vehicles, buses, just everything to help maintain the district as it is today. We've reviewed the scope of work and proposed pricing with all the soft costs and applied escalation costs with the board, with the leadership of each school, ourselves and our partners on the bond work, French and Associates, and Barton Mail built. So, really, a team collaboration of material gathered. As you guys know, we presented the preliminary findings to you guys in April, and then we completed user groups and interviews and meetings this fall, and obviously, we're here to present an updated on that. Some of the primary findings are as follows. Technology needs are about 57.2 million, facility needs are about 109, operations is 13.3, and that includes $8 million in new buses over the 10-year period. So, it's not all at once, it's spread out. So, that's about just shy of $180 million in totality. And if you, if you take that with the square footage that we have, that you guys have as a district, it's coming out to about $138 per square foot. And if you put that into perspective, in 2012, the high school at 70 million was about $183 per square foot, and right now, at your current bond, it's looking at 153, close to 154 per, per square foot.
So, really, again, as David mentioned, that's the 10-year escalated cost. We're going to start looking at net present value, because that's the lens of a sinking fund, where it's a pay-as-you-go versus a 20- or 30-year bond. So, the current sinking fund millage rate is .69, I believe it's just 6.98, if you want to put a .7 for semantics, we could do that. The current sinking fund, again, does expire in the fiscal year 2024. Right now, it currently generates about $3 million. For those that were here for the high school ballot proposal, there was an intention to actually drop the sinking fund from 1.5 to the current millage rate. Again, that was part of the overall strategy, to keep the millage, total millage rate lower, and we actually have a slide that shows you where you're at with your peer districts here in Oakland County. In 2016, the state legislature did change to allow districts to incorporate three mills over 10 years versus the previous five mills over 20 years, and you'll see some districts that actually are above the three mills, hence the predecessors to that 2016. The good part is, they actually allowed for additional instructional technology, so student devices, also, safety and security were also included, and we're going to have some slides here from Miller Canfield of the bond versus sinking fund as we go forward. So, we just put that out there relative to the-
I believe it says allowable there? Oh, you say allowable use cannot include?
Actually, that should be could include.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You wouldn't believe how many times we've gone through these slides.
Shh, go through the editor over here.
We focused on the, focused on the numbers.
Great catch. Thank you. All right. So, next slide, on slide six, is going to be kind of the allowable uses. I'm not going to go through them very specifically, other than the fact that the sinking fund is a pay-as-you-go, and really, the biggest difference is, is really school bus purchases, fixtures, furniture, and equipment, and low useful-life assets. So, something less than five years. So, again, we have a useful-life calculation that really shows the difference between those, but so, for instance, renovation, new construction, energy conservation, site improvements, so parking lots, sidewalks, plane, plane structures, lockers, things of that nature, would all be sinking fund allowable. On slide seven, again, you start to see some of the differences. I mentioned at the very top, FF and E or loose furnishings are not allowable by sinking fund. Also, preventative maintenance, warranty agreements, supplies, salaries, so again, just like bonds, you cannot use sinking funds for teacher salaries, service contracts, supplies, et cetera. Also, no vehicle purchases, uniforms or textbooks, and then also ultimately upgrades to systems. So, again, the original purchase of upgrading systems, its technology is allowable, its infrastructure, but let's say replacement of those contracts would not going forward.
One thing to notice in these slides, these are cut and paste, I'm assuming, out of Miller Canfield, and they had some footnotes, and you didn't copy over the footnote, so that there's-
That's a great point, yeah. So, actually, there's a four-page pamphlet, actually, that's provided at M A S B, and a district from Clark Hill. So, I think as the district starts to look at that plan, is actually have Mr. Crowley come and really talk about those specific items, maybe in the first three to five years to make sure that it's complying with those. It does get updated yearly, I know legislation changes a little bit in terms of what's now allowable and what's not.
I'm just thinking, if you want to send this out to the public or anything like that, take those footnotes and cut and paste those in also.
Yes, and even the footnotes have changed over time, based on, on the brochure, and I provided links before, but now that we're talking about this again, I'll provide a link in the next update.
So, on slide eight, again, is really a kind of analysis of, really, as Mr. Goldman mentioned, is, what is a sinking fund potentially for technology? So, we've looked at a .75 mill, again, to kind of really be dedicated towards technology. The other 1.5 would be, again, taking the current millage rate up to the 1.5 level. So, in the .75 piece, that's roughly $36.7 million over a 10-year timeframe, and the 1.5 does take you about $73.4 million for infrastructure, and we'll have a further breakdown of that going forward. So, at 2.25, again, it'll be just over $110 million for the district to address its technology as well as its infrastructure as part of the overall 10-year capital plan. Again, we just did analysis for perspective, if the district decided to go for the full three mills over a 10-year period, that's about $146.9 million. So, what does that mean for the average taxpayer? So, for, again, those that live in the district's boundaries, which is probably most of us here at this meeting, again, trying, trying to take a look at the 2022 tax year highlighted in blue, what you see kind of in the larger box would be that 2.25. So, again, 1.5 for infrastructure, .75 for technology. You can see the millage increase would be about 466 more than the current millage rate. We've actually took a look at taxable values of houses, so remember, it's roughly 50%. I think it's 515?
Yeah, about 558 was an average home value that we found when we were looking, but what's important to note is, anyone that's been in their home for a very long time, the market value is likely much greater, half of the market value, is much greater than this taxable value, because taxable values are capped every year to inflation or 5%. So, if you've been in your home a long time, you're, you may be on the lower end in terms of what you're taxed on.
Do we have an average number for Bloomfield Township? For the taxable value?
I, I looked up Bloomfield Hills in general, it's about 550 pers, not taxable value, that was the average home value. So, if everyone's only been in for about a year, that would be it, and then take half of that, and that's 275.
I'm sure the assessor's office could provide that to us.
Yeah, but the problem is, most people have been in their homes longer, you know, so there's this cap.
But I'm saying, the, both the townships and the West Bloomfield and Bloomfield Hills Assessor's Office- and Bloomfield Hills Assessor's Office have data. I mean, that's what they do.
They do, and a lot of it is online.
And they can take the total and divide by the number of houses and come up with average.
We've actually seen some districts, they put like a mortgage calculator kind of up on the website to, again, identify what that potential millage rate if it's 1.5 or .7.
Well, Tina had that before.
Yeah, and we would do that again.
So on slide 10, we start to really take a look in totality of the districts within Oakland County. Again, just a reminder, 2.75 is the current bond. So this would be the high school bond. Again, I think you had a 30-year bond for the new construction. So this is the payoff for the principal interests. And then again, the .7 or .69 mills, it's really about 3.45. When you take a look holistically, you're probably second or third lowest millage rate in totality across the entire county. And why is that? Because housing values are very strong here in Bloomfield. You have a very strong taxable base in terms of a good mix of businesses along telegraph. You've got obviously a little bit of manufacturing, corporate, not a ton. But when you just take a look at, for instance, Birmingham schools, they're just over four mills. And again, you look at some of the historical aspects of their proposals. One of the things we also, if you take a look in the news, who's going to potentially go out this next couple of weeks? So Troy, I believe, is $555 million. So that millage rate will take them up closer. If you see there in the far right, they're going to be closer to that six and a half, seven mil. So again, you're kind of in line with the Novi's, the North Hills from a current taxable rate going forward.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question about this slide.
And then slide 11, these are some other considerations. So again, as we mentioned, you've got about $110 million of potential funding through a sinking fund. The thing that David's going to go through here shortly is a little bit of that approach of timing and scope. We've talked a little bit about cost savings. So there are some current cost savings in the current bond. We expect that to grow over the next several years. We also talked about other funding sources. So again, you've sold some properties, you have a capital fund. Would that potentially lower that $110 million? And then on the right-hand side, you just see a sample worksheet. So again, anything that's being proposed, you're going to kind of walk through this exercise to make sure you're spending sinking fund dollars for long-term assets going forward. So then I'm going to turn back to Mr. Goldman and take a look at the technology and then also the approach for sinking.
Yeah, as Paul mentioned, right now, we're looking at the technology costs. The first cost we have up there is 57.2 million. That is with an escalation factor on it. You can see the footnotes down below. Net present value technology needs is about 43.5 million. So the escalation, obviously, it includes escalation costs, off costs, and whatnot, and new construction. So as you can see, you know, it's broken down, you know, network system, safety and security, instructional devices, audio visual, and software services, again, over the 10-year period of... And then this is kind of what would be a allowed sinking fund approach with technology. You're looking at about 37.6 million. As we've been, as you've been told, the .75 mills generates about 3.4 to 4 million per year. That's not general funded. So the best practice when you're really looking at technology is to do a horizontal approach, which means you're not replacing all your servers at the same time. You're spreading that cost out over the life of the 10 years so they're not all going to die or need to be replaced at the same time. A more vertical would be doing that replacement all at the same time. So you really want to look at that horizontal approach when you're looking at technology for sure. And then on the operation side of things, we kind of broke it down by scope. Obviously, you guys have heard it before, you know, 122.3 with the escalation. And without that, the net present value is about just shy of $80 million. Obviously, our reports and our walkthroughs, we've broken them down into these major categories listed below. We have hard copies here if anyone would like to take a look at it. But it, and the buses are included in there as well. So you can see that, again, the soft costs versus the, or I'm sorry, the escalated costs versus the non-escalated costs. And then really, by the sinking fund approach for that CIP, which is the capital plan, the 73 million, right now, the 1.5 mills generates about 6.7 to 8 per year. So on this one, you need to really determine if you're going to do a horizontal or vertical approach with the maintenance side of things, you know? Are we going to go and replace all the roofs at the same time? All the parking lots at the same time? Or are you going to pick and choose between different schools and whatnot? It could go either way. But, you know, like I said, with technology, it's really the horizontal way. But in terms of capital, you could do it either way. And we could work with you guys to really come up with a game plan for all the needs.
The other aspect that we have in there on slide 15 is just kind of unknown improvements. So again, we know things that may not necessarily be identified that do happen. So again, about $435,000 a year or roughly 4.35 million over the total. So as Mr. Goldman kind of showed you, kind of have an approach for the technology side. Again, these would save general fund dollars, which I believe most of the, I'll call it non-bond stuff in the future would be coming out of general fund should a sinking fund not be considered. And then also on the facility side, again, just the improvements about 6.7 to 8 million per year. So on slide 16, again, just kind of a little bit of timeline. So again, really kicked this off last year doing facility walkthroughs, meeting with the principals, honest with Mr. McDermott's eyes, kind of fresh to the district and his perspective. Tina and her staff on the financial aspects of it. Again, kind of listing the priorities. So what the sinking fund really would do at 10-year is allow you to address pretty much everything in that first two columns of that one to three and four to five years. You start getting out that seven to 10-year time window. Again, that's where you just do this continual update of your assessments to see if that boiler can make it an extra two to three years. If that roof can actually have a different appliance system and give you a couple of extra years out of it. So there's just that ongoing assessment that we'd encourage the board and the administration to conduct on a yearly basis. So really, we're in that last column. So again, we've got a 10-year capital improvement plan. It kind of gives you an idea of totality as well as by schools, by scope. And then ultimately, we've kind of broken out of really what could be potentially funded through a sinking fund. So at that, I'm going to turn back over to Ms. Kostic and the board members for any questions.
So basically, on this last side in the bright green, you see November. I think, given the board agenda review that will be coming up tonight on the agenda, there's been a placeholder for November 17th for the board to consider a resolution to place a sinking fund request on the ballot for May, May of 2023. There's a lot of handouts that I provided with all the election timelines. And so at this point, any questions you have with what Paul went over or anything also in the folder that was labeled 5C, we can address those to see where the board is at this evening.
John, do you want to go around or is it Ray's or Andrew's?
Go with Ray's stance. So Paul and Tina, what's been presented is a need over 10 years for 179, let's say 180 million. And the most we can raise is three mills, right? Is that right?
That's correct.
And a three-mill raise from the district gives us about 150 million, right? And not only that, we're not even going for that. We're probably going to ask for 2.25, which is 110 million, which is 60% of our projected need of 180 million. So there's a big disconnect here. Either our 180 is way too, I guess, optimistic of a want or we're not, or we need to figure out other ways to raise the funds. So I want to know how realistic is the 180? And what are the assumptions behind the 180 number?
So part of the slides that Paul just went over, and I'm just asking him to go through, you have dollars in net present value. What we tried to do with the entire assessment and all of the needs is break that down to what is sinking fund allowable and what wouldn't be. And right now, we're focusing on what's sinking fund allowable. And I'm trying to read from over here. Not those, but the dollar amounts? You know how you went through sinking fund approach? So some, so it's less than that because there's a certain dollar amount, and I'm looking for that dollar on the slides that would not be sinking fund. And so that's the 2.25. My recommendation, and I think I said it once or twice in the past couple of meetings, would be, I believe, because of experiencing, witnessing, and observing what had to be done to make the sinking fund dollars stretch before this bond passed. And the bond wasn't going to solve everything. This district, long-term, because I don't recall saying we'd have a bond in the next decade or two, needs to have three mills to really do what we need to for the things that the bond is not doing. But I'm not sure where the board is, so we've also circled the 2.25. And as we have experienced since 2004, when the sinking fund was first passed, and that rate was rolled back, and then it was passed for less than half that rate for the last several years, we've been living under that. We, the district with Jake's leadership, his team, and all the others that we partner with, we prioritize and we make do. But it's really put us in a position where there's still a lot that hasn't been done. And especially with Jake's fresh set of eyes and coming from other districts. When people come in from other districts, they're recognizing there's so much more that we could do. And with the expanded law for allowable uses around safety, security, and instructional technology, that is key. So that by itself, I think, makes the rationale and the argument to go above the original 1.5, whether it's 2.25 or 2.5. And I'd also caution us that the Headley rollbacks have us lose revenue over time, too.
Ms. Kostic, if I could, so just taking technology. So for instance, you cannot buy teachers' instructional devices, as crazy as it sounds, as part of the sinking fund. So that would either have to come out of the current bond fund or out of a general fund expense. And then the same thing on the capital side, as Mr. Goldman showed, you've got roughly $4 million of furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Again, that would either be a bond or a general fund. And then the same thing with buses. So I know there is some language allowable for bus purchases in the current bond. But again, that is not a sinking fund. So I think to your question of this 170-plus, there's probably 25 to 30 million that are either going to have to be a bond or a general fund, not a sinking fund. And so again, you see that, you know, all these districts that have a bond, they follow up with a sinking fund. They have a bond. So again, that's just a cycle that the majority of the districts have kind of gotten into. Because again, we know the FT allowances for student foundation doesn't really necessarily allow you to spend $138 a foot for some of that issue, so.
All right. So thanks for putting the presentation together. So in getting to Siva's point, so what the ask is, ultimate ask, and then as a board is, if I look at slide nine, let's just say the average is 350 taxable value. It would be, if we went to 2.5 mills, it would be a $500, $540 increase per taxpayer on average. Went to three, which is the ultimate ask, it would be, you know, close to like $800 per taxpayer on average increase, assuming 350 is that average number. And then the ultimate question, right, Pat, going through what we did a couple of years ago, you know, and taxpayer, you know, people ask this, is, well, I thought that the bond was covering everything. What's the answer to that question that we may get asked?
Trying to remember as best I can. I think part of what we share with the community is bond covers our immediate needs. And part of that is going to be the reconfiguration and cost savings that are going to take place. I don't know if we said it's going to take care of long-term needs outside of the scope of the bond. I think it was pretty easy to articulate what those needs would be. I think, you know, depending what the board decides, it's also important to share what we're going to do with the funds, right? So overall, district-wide and then building by building, what does this mean if my child goes to Conant and then goes to South Hills and then goes to BHHS or goes to IA or goes to Bowers? We'll need to be able to articulate that as well.
And then, and ultimately, right, if, I mean, if this doesn't happen or this doesn't go out to the voters, you know, so what would happen over the course of 10 years? Like, where would the money come from?
General fund.
Just the general fund?
Yeah, I think we start prioritizing again. You know, we're doing a Band-Aid fix in the district is what we're doing. Everywhere I look, I could walk this building and probably pick out millions of dollars worth of repairs, including the 1.5, 1.7 million roof we need. You know, it's, I go to Tina and I say, this is my list, this is my priority. And we start scrambling, figuring out what the top fixes are.
Yeah, okay. I mean, yeah, ultimately, right, Pat, we're going to have to go to like the notes of two years ago because I was, right, we were all, most of us were on those road shows. And I remember those questions came up, you know? And whether people recall, they, you know, were under the impression that all of this was covered. I'm just saying. What, some, maybe not all, but some may bring that up.
Okay.
All right, sorry, my contact is your... So I've got two questions. Tina, on the slide or on the spreadsheet that says, "BHS sinking fund taxable value millage and projected revenues?" Matrix? You there?
Okay.
It's got tax years going down the Y-axis and then millage rates across the X-axis.
What slide is that?
It's just one of the...
Number eight.
Is it eight? No. Well, I was doing one of the ABCDs. I don't know which one it was. What I'm wondering is, you project from 2023 to 2032, and the taxable values are increasing by inflation or by some rate. But the millage up at the top is a straight number. You don't take Headley into account year by year as Headley rolls back those millages?
Oh, Headley would roll back the millages.
I know, but I'm saying, but did you take Headley into consideration in this matrix?
No, so I would have to, I would have to do a much bigger...
Right.
Yes, no, Headley's not considered. So I'm asking us to consider Headley.
What I'm saying is these numbers at the bottom line here of 37 million, 73 million, 110 million, and 147 million are probably overstated because the millage of 2.25 by 2032 will not be 2.25.
So I, there's a couple of variables going on. First of all, the taxable value is projected to increase based on historical increases. On average, which we did have that one property value dip that's in that mix. And what I factored in here is conservative. So that conservative taxable value increase, I am hoping offsets the Headley rollback because I was trying to keep this handout simple.
Okay, I don't know whether that assumption is going to give us the right number, but all right. Moving on.
We'll connect in 10 years.
Moving on. So from the presentation that David just did for us, you've got a technology millage portion of .75 and a construction process millage percent or amount of 1.5 mills, which is coming out to 2.25 mills. But what Siva just said is we got a 10 pounds and a five-pound sack. We have more need than we have millage. So the question I'm wondering is if we, even at three mills, were still short, which is, I think, we just said a few minutes ago, why in the world are we going at 2.25?
That was just an example, the 2.25.
But that was in your presentation as your, sounding like your proposal to us.
So collectively, what we discussed, three mills is the max. And I've said that's what we recommend. Based on the reaction I saw, we decided to provide an example of 2.25. And here's how we arrived at that. 1.5 was the original sinking fund millage in 2004. And then we know that that was reduced. But if we look at that original 1.5, that did not include the expanded uses around instructional technology and safety and security. So we thought it was very reasonable to add .75 to cover that, which was in the slides. That gets us to 2.25. From there, I just, I didn't push it farther. I would encourage us to add at least .25 for the Headley rollback. That gets us to 2.5. And because so much, there are things that are not sinking fund allowable. And I don't know if the laws will expand any further to include buses because that's been a discussion over the years, right?
There are bills in the House and the Senate to do that.
Right. Right, so if something like that were to occur, it'd probably be only good for, at the, just like what happened last time, for sinking fund millage that passed after that law changed, and we'd have to tackle that later. But based on all of the needs, I still believe three mils makes sense. So 2.25 was just, it was just used as an example in the slides, don't get hung up on.
Because you had heard, from what I think you said, you said you would sort of heard from the board that they were not comfortable with 2.
No, I didn't hear. I was looking at your reactions, it's solely my, my interpretation from when I said three, listening to the committee meetings of the, especially the last two in October and September, where I know one definitely, I can, I pictured Jennifer saying 1.5 at a minimum, but then some, you know, three mils, I don't know. So that's where, that's a board decision.
I'll go back to where I was in the last meeting a month ago. In order to determine where that number, obviously from, from demand, it's three mils. Shaking head, shaking head, so three mils. The only reason we wouldn't want to do three mils is the reaction of the public. And I can see another shaking head. So given what we talked about earlier, board, in terms of being data-driven, the need is there for three mils. The question is whether the community would pay for three mils. And I'd say being data-driven and getting facts and not opinion, not I think, but I know as best we can know, the only way you can determine that is by asking the public and getting a poll. There's only one way to do it. Other than that, other than that, we are all basing our own, based upon, I think that the public will say this, or I think that. We need to be data-driven.
Can, I'm going to ask a question.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Yes.
When the, when we went for the bond two years ago, there was a critical needs assessment that said we had $33 million worth of critical needs from the 2019, 2020, 2020, 21, 2021, 2022. How much of those critical needs came to be critical or how much was covered by the bond? I guess, what, like what happened to that assessment? And did any of that stuff get taken care of prior? Is that still part of this 170, 9.5 million? And what was told to the public about those critical needs in relationship to the bond that was passed two years ago?
So without comparing the list one by one, I'm not going to be able to give you a detailed answer. But I will say, anything that was critical on that, on that list was going, was planned on being taken care of by the bond, some things may have, I'd have to compare one to the other. That 33 million was the minimum Band-Aid of the, the roof is leaking somewhere, which we've done roof repairs over time. Now we have some significant ones coming up, actually on the agenda in November. So some of those were taken care of that way, some of it was sinking fund. And then, once the bond passed, everything was looked at holistically. I think some of those critical needs may have even come off because the bond was reconfiguring the schools for fall of '23. So we also had to consider whether money was going to be spent, if it would have to be undone, because now we were going for a new configuration. So so much change, it's very intertwined, but those were critical. So we were going to do that, keep Band-Aiding. Frankly, it was, it was scary to even present that as an option. So it was the critical needs, road closed, brighter future. The district and the board went brighter future and went for the bond.
Tina, I would add, just as a note, we also use capital equipment fund for some of those critical needs. So for on the technology, we would not wait for the bond dollars to come in. So we had to immediately take care of those critical needs, and so we use capital equipment fund or sinking fund depending on the situation to solve those needs immediately.
Lisa?
So, well, I wanted to say, John, your question, listening to it, I think it's impossible for Tina to be able to answer it because it's sort of like comparing apples to oranges because so much of what went into the 32 million was negated by the fact that we passed the bond, and so we didn't need to do the immediate fix because we were going for the more long-term fix. So, you know, why spend 2 million to patch a roof that, on a building that we're going to knock down, for example? So it changed when the bond passed. So it's not, it's not necessarily possible. Am I right in that or?
Actually, if I may, so the first task we actually did was remember the blue sheets that kind of made up the bond, which incorporated the 33 million of critical. We spent probably three months with Mr. McDermott, Mr. Shulkin, literally cross-connecting to make sure that was addressed in the bond itself. But to your point, hey, we need to repair a roof. Guess what? North Hills, you're getting an all-new roof because it makes the whole sense since you're there. So that 33 million was incorporated. And again, we sat down with Bart Mel over a three to four-month period, and literally went blue sheet by blue sheet, and then also extrapolated onto the 10-year capital plan to make sure we're not duplicating it. But more importantly, you're also not missing something that's a critical need in the next 10 years, so.
But my actual question or comment, I guess, was slide six and seven, and I've seen the earlier versions of that too, Tina, so I know the footnotes change, which is really distinguishing what can be used for sinking fund bond and what has to come out of the general fund. Because we repeatedly have to explain to new parents, to parent, you know, anybody voting, what, what funding mechanisms can fund which particular thing. So I think those are really useful, but I would add maybe some kind of explanation about the way that they're funded. So if you're going to build a new building, you can't pay for it 3 million a year. You have to have it upfront, and only a bond can do that. So I think that's another important distinction. We all know that, and it's not a complex analysis, but it is just a different funding mechanism. So the work that we were doing with the bond, it's not interchangeable with sinking fund because no contractor is going to agree to be paid over a 20-year span of 3 million a year. So I, I think that that distinction has to be made, too. It, they're, they're very different in terms of not just what they fund, but how they're funded, how, the access we have to the funding dollars.
That's a great point, Lisa.
So, thank you for the segue. So I want to respond to you, Howard, which is, I don't think, I get why you want to poll, and in some circumstances, that would work. I don't think it would work in this circumstance, because I think what you would get is the answers of people who will vote for education no matter what, no matter how much, and then probably north of 51% of the people who will say, you know, hell no, we just gave you a bond. But what they won't have is the education piece. And now, I don't know, because we didn't do a survey before the bond, but there were months and months and months of community education, and I swear to you, I personally changed several dozen minds by telling them, by showing them. The chart with all the other school districts in the county was shocking, right? If, you don't know any of that if you get a survey in the mail. And for that reason, I don't think a survey is going to be useful for us.
This is not a survey, this is a poll.
I don't, I don't think a poll is going to tell us anything because we're going to go out there, or the, everyone in the room who isn't me, I will do my part, I promise, is going to go out there and stomp the pavement in their free time and educate the public as to what this is for and why.
As part of the poll also, you can give the poll, the person who does the poll, a script and have them explain everything that you would say as part of a, you know, a roadshow type of thing. You can, you, oh, another thing you could do, as opposed to a poll, you could do focus groups and have a, a good sample of people in a focus group. And that way, instead of just having them for five or 10 minutes, you can have them for an hour or two, and you can do PowerPoints and you can do presentations. But what you're trying to do is get a temperature of the community to determine what they feel they are willing to pay. It's data.
Can I ask another question? Are we on to election timeline yet or are we still on dollars?
On to anything in 5B or 5C?
Okay, so I'm just wondering, because I, I'm sorry, I said at the last meeting, I see obstacles here. I see a lot of, anyway, it can be done. I think it can, I think it can be done at three mils, but it's going to take a lot of community education. And so just seeing that May is so unpopular because of the cost, besides the, the inflation and the timeline push of those three months, is there any other massive downside for making this an August election? I feel like we just should not try to add to the challenges, if possible.
I mean, depending on what's on the ballot, August could be as expensive as May.
Well, I thought August.
Nothing, assume nothing else, for 2023, nothing's going to be on the ballot.
Oh, so you would have to pay in August.
I mean, if by chance, one of the townships happens to have a millage at the same time, we could share it. Otherwise, nothing's going to be there. It's all on us.
We just don't know, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the timing of when this expires and when it would be needed to, to know to be successful in order to bid and plan and everything else, not to have a gap in summer, especially with the list that is the one to three years, you know, most important kind of needs. It's just, it's unfortunate 2023 is not providing us very many cost-efficient options.
Did you say Troy is going for 558 million?
555?
555 with an additional two mil increase.
As a sinking fund?
No.
As a bond?
A bond.
Okay.
Regarding the cost of an election, too, I mean, just because there's more absentee ballot voters and because of consolidation that now is employed by the township and I believe other, other municipalities, it's costing less and less to have a standalone election than ever before.
I mean, in terms of timing to what you said, I mean, in the timetable that Tina gave us, it says that without knowing funding by November, December 2023, there'll be a pause. So you want to be able to do two bites of the apple. You want to do it one time and then regroup if it doesn't pass and go back three months later or so. So by, for November, December, you would possibly go August, first bite, November second bite. And that way, it meets the timing of not having a pause. But what it does do is provides more time to maybe start doing some of the roadshow, some of the convincing during the winter, then maybe doing a poll after doing that communication to the public. I mean, obviously, we don't have any public here today. We need to be able to get this out to the, to the world that we're considering this. And in a sense, do the roadshow before we actually approve it and then get, use the, the information we hear in the roadshow as feedback. That's another way to get data into us, not just in a statistically valid poll or a focus group, but you can get anecdotal information during January, February, March, as we do a roadshow.
I like the idea of focus groups.
Yeah, but that way, instead of, instead of trying to put us kind of under the gun of May, I mean, the cost of the, of the, of the ballot is going to be the same, whether it's August or November.
So I would just say we need to also pay attention when we talk about a, potentially needing a second bite at the apple, paying attention to the timeline of when a resolution for a ballot proposal needs to be submitted to the county. So we really, having back-to-back, doesn't allow for that. So in the example you provided, if we, if the board chooses to go for August, and on August 8th, we learned we need a second bite at the apple.
You would have to go by August 15th, you would have to actually, right?
So that's where it's like, it's almost May, you skip a date to prepare for the next one.
So then you would, what you would do is, and again, that would sacrifice some of the timing, but you would then go from March of 2024, which definitely is going to be, it's a presidential primary, so that's definitely free, and that would give you the, you know, three to six months. So it screws you up. Now granted that that's for the second bite, so hopefully, probabilistically, we don't do that. But, you know, so that, you know, if we do it in August, we'd still, if it passes, we'd be okay, and we wouldn't have a delay, only if it loses. But if we do the work for the first six months, we can have a much better probability of success, knowing that when it goes on the ballot, it's going to pass, as opposed to holding our gut and hoping.
It's always that.
I, well, of course, you're never 100% sure, but you're more likely, if you've done the work over the first, because we, we would have to go to the August ballot, we'd have to make a decision by May, you know, by the end of April, beginning of May. So that gives us basically five months from now to do focus groups, polls, roadshows, whatever, and by the time we get to, April should have a lot more knowledge in terms of what the public thinks.
Do you want to turn to come back and roll into these focus groups? You write your name down?
I can help, sure.
I will definitely help.
You wrote your name down, Tim?
Don't put my name down, please.
But this is why you get paid the big bucks?
Yeah.
So then I might add, even for the May election, that there, there is time, but we need to remember that three of you are not coming back in January. So with all of the.
Again, we won't be here, but we could be there.
Right, but as far as passing a resolution with potentially up to four new faces, depending on what happens with our incumbent, it may take a while to get everyone up to speed.
We had that conversation about two hours ago, about what you guys have to do as of next week to start bringing people up to speed so that you can hit the ground.
Well, we have, listen, we've got a clear recommendation, so.
So should we go around?
Yeah, if we're going to talk about second-guessing it, that, that might be something we want to put on an agenda in the future because, yeah.
I'm just saying, Tina was not here when we had the board self-evaluate some discussion for an hour and a half.
No, I know, but, but, you know, we have a recommendation with lots of information provided to us.
So what's the recommendation? We don't have a recommendation?
Well, we have a recommendation of three mils and we have dates that are recommended.
What, what, please tell me what you were hearing as a recommendation.
Am I right about that? Is it not the recommendation?
Three mils May of '23 and pass a resolution on November 17.
Three mils, not 2.25, okay.
I think the other recommendation is that this board of seven decide before December what the recommendation's going to be and not wait for four, three to four new board members, because it's not fair for them to expect them to get up to speed in a month or two.
Yeah.
The only thing, well, we can make a recommendation for May, or we can make, not recommend, we can give a direction for May, or we can give a direction for August.
But we have, we have a recommendation right now. Are we going to take it yes or no?
What is the recommendation?
It's three mils, May, what's the date, Tina?
May of '23.
May 23rd.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Is the recommendation to put it at the next board meeting for us to decide as a board for a resolution? Because we're not making a recommendation now, we're just, a recommendation is for the next meeting to put it on the agenda to decide as a board if we're going to make a recommendation.
Right, it is administration's recommendation to have it on the November 17 regular board meeting under Board Business with the group you see here doing a presentation with a resolution in ballot language that you would have in front of you to pass that resolution on November 17, putting it on a ballot for May of '23.
And that resolution at this point would say three mils for, for May?
Correct.
Uh, yes, and I'm looking.
Is what the administration's recommendation is for that proposal for next week or two weeks from now?
Correct.
The resolution.
All right. I mean, if we have questions, this is, that we're not voting now, that's, unless you want to get a non-voting general sense of whether we approve.
I think they want a general, they want a general sense.
Oh, all right, well, are we on the agenda discussion yet?
I'm sorry?
Well, we're not really voting, we're just saying, do we want it on the agenda? Yeah, it's like an agenda setting.
All right, well, so are we on that number? Have we moved on from this folder onto the agenda setting?
Do we have any more questions?
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess my perspective, and going back to my point, is in the presentation on the 7 days, we're not voting here, whether, you know, we're just voting whether it's on the agenda, is I, I need, we need to see the notes on what was, what we thought was covered under the bond and what wasn't, from my perspective, right? Being a member that went on all the roadshows and, you know, and the people that I've talked to right now, because I think there is an impression that this stuff was covered.
Of course.
And so, there needs to be an education piece about a sinking fund, right? Like, we, this is something we've always had, we're always gonna need it versus the bond for this massive overhaul of the infrastructure.
At 0.75?
For, for repairs, right? Again, I, that's, for, for the presentation on the 17th, for the community, us, or, you know, at least May, it was going back to those notes, what we said to the community for the bond, covered and did not cover it, because there will be a perception, and even my perception, that a lot of this was covered.
Would it be helpful if I kind of represented the slide deck from the roadshow regarding the bond, just briefly? About when we went on the road, here's what we said we were going to do with the bond?
Yeah, I think we need some compare and contrast issues.
Because it's gonna be a combination of what was in the presentation, in the, in the PowerPoint, but also what might have been said verbally. Because that I think is probably where the confusion might be in terms of what was said that might, and people have different interpretations of what that was.
Go ahead, Tina.
So, on September 8th is when you were first presented the very lengthy report, the binders that were held up a moment ago, and the peach color coding is what is part of the bond. So, there's information that you would have, Paul, anything else you wanna add to that?
Yeah, so again, that was the efforts that we went through, the blue sheets to make sure we incorporated, to make sure that if a public entity or a board member said, wasn't included in the bond, so if you just, I know you go through 175 pages, but I'm gonna pick on Bloomfield Hills Middle School. You know, for instance, controls for the roofing mechanical units was included in the bond. So, there's no dollars in the capital improvement, but it was covered in the bond. So, that 33 million, we can actually dictate it literally by school, by building, and also the dollar amounts to make sure that the public feels good that out of the hundred or 200 million dollars, that, that 33 million was captured.
Yeah, and, and also, right, just reflecting back a couple of years, it, you know, I'm not saying you had it, but a question could be, it's like, all right, this is what be included, and this is not, and then in the future, we're gonna, you know, look for this.
I, I had the perception that we're spending, I mean, when we did the first bond, it was just for the high school. This bond, the 200 million dollar bond, hit every single building. So, my assumption, not in writing, but my assumption was boil, boil. We're upgrading all of our buildings with the 200 million, largest we've ever spent in this district. My assumption was that we would save on the sinking fund. We would need that or less in the sinking fund because we have now brought our, all of our buildings from the 1950s and 60s up to 2020 standards and, and levels. I was shocked when we got the extra package and it was 170 million dollars. So, whether that was actually in the PowerPoint presentations or not, the logic I had was because we're spending in every single building, we should need less maintenance, or less ongoing costs.
I, I think that was my assumption.
That was my, and again, I, I'm, that's one board member and one community member's assumption.
Yeah, I, I think we all had different assumptions, but to me, it was illogical to think that many and most of the sinking fund projects could even come out of a bond because a bond is a one-time payment. So, what are you maintaining the buildings with if we aren't gonna have a significant, and second, I wanna say, I think that the upkeep costs were reduced. I think where the increase came is because Jake came in and identified all of the things that we kinda let go over the years, a, and we decided we weren't gonna do that. So, we could have a reduced sinking fund, but 10 years down the road, we're gonna have very poor maintenance on the buildings. We don't wanna keep doing that, what we've done in the past, which is band-aiding things. So, that might be the increase.
We're agreeing on that, that's not the problem.
Right, but I'm saying, when you were shocked by the increase in number, it, it's not that there's not a reduction in costs because of the renovations, it's because we are finally addressing things we have never addressed before, like required maintenance.
But then, what we're doing is, we're saying that we, as a district, prior to Jake, were not fully incorporating all the costs that we should've.
Right, exactly, that's what they've been saying to us over the last 45 minutes.
Yeah, so we're, in a sense, we're throwing our, our, the last five or years or 10 years under the bus a little bit.
Well, no, I mean, we're saying we don't wanna do that again, they had to because they didn't have a sinking fund large enough to address it, so what could-
But we need to be able to tell the public that, that basically, we've had a come-to-Jesus moment, we've got a full, you know, list of all the requirements, this gets us up to 2020s, 2030 standards, and, um, we can go forward. And then the report to that from the public is say, well, you're saying that you didn't do that five years ago?
No, we didn't, because, because it went, it went way back to, if you listen to Tina, the intention in reducing the sinking fund so that we could get a high school bond passed. It, it's part of the history of this district, and we're trying to fix it.
We're playing catch-up from that war, and we were terrified to even ask for 200 million because of the war over the high school. And so, we are still trying to climb out of that hole of being underfunded since the district began.
What we would need to do is, we need to put that in this slide and tell the public.
Right, we could do that, Howard, I mean, I for one would hate to spend 200 million dollars on these buildings and then have them fall into disrepair because we don't have funding in the sinking fund to upkeep them.
Are, are we, can we put this on the agenda for the 17th?
So, I, when you say this, though, what exactly, are you saying that we're gonna have, we're gonna have on, on the agenda for voting, Tina's recommendation of three mils, May of 2023, okay.
Now, just so you know, if that, if that's the, the resolution, I will put an amendment in to say three mils, well, one, three mils for August, and second, I would put an amendment in to say that we do a, some sort of survey or roadshow or focus group or something to get a feel for the public. You could vote it down, but I will, and I would have to have a second, and if I don't get a second, obviously, it dies. But those two things, I think we need more time, and I think we need to get some feedback from the public, especially after what we've just been talking about. Not just to get seven people's opinion in terms of what was said or not said two years ago, but to see what 40,000 voters' perception was.
But I, I just wanna caution the messaging that comes out of statements like that because that does a lot of damage that we then have to go back and fix. It's not seven people, it's our director, the superintendent of finance, that's making a recommendation.
It's this room, it's people in this room, it's not the voters. They're the ones who make the decision, not the administration, not us, it's the voters.
I understand, but it's a recommendation from our expert.
True, oh, I'm not disagreeing on the three mils.
Well, you said seven people, that was misleading.
20 people.
All right.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Feel free.
I, I, I will support, I will not vote no against a three-mil resolution. It is my uneducated gut feeling that the community will not tolerate a number that is higher than the bond was or our total debt service, which is what, 2.7 at this time?
2.75 for the high school and the new bond combined.
I think it's more realistic to try to go for 2.25, that's my personal opinion. But I will, I will support the three if, if that's where everybody else's head is at.
There is one other factor to consider, and I had brought this up earlier in another one-on-one discussion. There ought to be savings coming out of the 200 million bond that we just passed.
We told people there'd be savings coming out of the 200 million dollar bond.
Right, there's contingency in there, and whatever number that may be, 10 million, 20 million, whatever, should obviously reduce this number by some amount.
So, when you're talking about savings, is that capital savings or operating cost savings?
Capital savings.
Okay. Because, just so you know, when we did the high school bond and we did, merged two buildings, it was, the big conversation was the operating cost efficiency of having one building set two.
And, and there will be some of that which has yet to be quantified from the second bond.
But mostly on the capital.
There will be some operational TBD savings, um, I don't know what that number is, from bringing, uh, or aligning all of the middle schools and elementary-
One less principal, one less, you know, registration in a, in a middle school.
Siff's suggestion-
But, but, sorry, my point is, still, there's gotta be savings from the capital, 200 million capital raised, that ought to offset some of this increase. I don't know if it's 10 million, 20 million of the 200.
Is it possible, was it an investment, what that would be?
It was kind of an if come, I think of, this is what we would've spent, kind of an opportunity cost that we didn't spend, but I don't know in the 170 million whether that-
It doesn't reflect any of those savings, I'm saying.
Yeah.
But we, we ought to scrutinize whatever we're spending on our 200 million in middle school and elementary school because every dollar saved there could potentially offset some of these upcoming bills here.
So, are you, are we ready to put it, I mean, to even put it on an agenda, do we need more information? I mean, again, it's, I know this was presented, you know, my, my point, similar to Howard's point, I think there was a perception, whether, you know, that the community, that the bond covered everything, whether that's an assumption or not. We're, you know, we're looking at right now, potentially, right, going, maybe going through a, a recession. I, I think it's, it's just a bad time right now.
Whatever we do, we better phrase this as the annual revenues. I, we cannot, I, I do not wanna throw around 150 million, 180 million to this community, it will, it will be misunderstood, and I think we should talk about it in terms of the yearly income that it provides.
18 million a year.
Doing 18 million a year to maintain the building.
Right, but I think, Siff, at your point, and probably Paul, Howard, John, who thought, and myself too, that there would be some savings, um, from the bond because I, I do remember that component of, you know, that ultimately would, having that subtracted from, and then even if we, what we're adding in in your preventative maintenance ultimately still gets us to three mils, having an estimate of what that cost savings figure was would be helpful and, um, you know, help clear up whoever, I, now, I mean, I'm hearing that we did promise operational and capital cost savings in our consolidation. That was a sort of a selling point of it. If we can't, you know, if we can't pinpoint to the penny what we, what we saved, maybe we can come up with some, you know, rough estimate because, uh, you know, and then we're adding that number back in plus whatever else so that we can do the preventative maintenance, so we don't fall into disrepair so quickly.
That conversation is, can be simplified by saying we're running two middle schools instead of three that we couldn't populate, you know, I mean, that-
But that might be only operational, there are some capital savings as well.
And, and so, maybe that translates into a quarter mil of savings, right?
Right.
Ongoing basis.
I mean-
Right, and, or, or a half a mil, I don't know what the number is, but it's good to have that.
Just so you know, people in, in social media right now are commenting on what's going on in this meeting right now, number one.
They're commenting on every community.
Number two, with Jake starting over the last few years, I think our expectations have gone up in terms of what a building should be. So, what we need to be able, if we're talking about, let's just using the numbers of 18 million just for argument's sake, and if we were spending 3 million, two and a half to 3 million per year, and most of the roofs weren't leaking and most of the driveways were okay and the, you know, there was heat and light in the buildings, we need to be able to show what was the deferred maintenance, what was happening during that three mil, I'm sorry, um, 3 million or 0.75 mil period for the last 10 years that might not have been seen by the public, some of it like the IA ceiling, you know, roofs were, but some of the other things might not have been seen, but that our expectations are now higher and quite frankly, where they should've been. But we need to be able to explain that to the public because when we did the bond, we didn't say that at all. And that's why this is kind of a shock at this point because we're going from 3 million dollars a year to 18 million dollars a year. Why isn't 3 million dollars still good enough? So, we've got a big sell job that we have to do to the public.
I agree completely with that on the sell job. I think a lot of people don't understand how the sinking fund works. You know, this room does, right, but the public doesn't, and how it maintains our buildings, how it gets rid of asbestos, how it gets, and yes, we are touching every building within the bond, but just like over at North, we, we were gonna paint the walls until I walked that site and said, where's all the rainwater coming in at? Well, let's do an assessment. Oh, it's another $120,000 of sinking fund money that's gonna fix that rainwater that we were gonna let just go in a brand-new facility, right? It's those things that we're finding as we're doing the bond and we're touching old areas, right? You're cleaning out Grandma's attic and you're finding ghosts in the attic and you gotta take care of that just in order to sell the house. And that's where we're at now, and we're adding a pool to this district too, we're having to have two pools. You know, that, that is gonna help, things are gonna break down. A UV system is $80,000. And, and once that breaks down, we have to sit down as a team and say, how do we pay for that? And once we start looking at, do we wanna, do we wanna fix Conant's parking lot? Or do we need two new UVs, you know, system? So, I think educating the, the public and saying what the sinking fund goes to, it maintains the excellence, right? We're maintaining the doors, and the thing that we, we keep forgetting is safety and security got added into the, the sinking fund. Safety and security is the number one thing that we talk about when we see these sites. So, when it got cut in half and 3 million dollars a year, safety and security was a concern, but it wasn't a concern it is today.
I think, again, you know, going back, you know, I know, or, or, you know, just thinking, Howard's point, focus, you know, focus groups. If you asked, my opinion, and being in front, front of the bond, if you asked 40 people, you know, their perception of the bond, they were like, you know, and there was like, oh, yeah, you know, understand the sinking fund, but now they're gonna have all these new, you know, great things that, you know, that will have these savings, so the sinking fund will just, for simple repairs. You know, I, I just, I just think their perception was is that we were good with this current sinking fund and the bond after this forever.
Which is another reason why I think waiting until doing it in August-
Well, with, with 3 million dollars, with, with, with what we had.
To research this, to think about it internally and to try to come up with our message to go out to the public.
Sorry, you know, I'm just saying, you know, just addressing, if you ask the average person after, you know, coming back and just remembering in their mind a couple of years ago, the bond, that would be their perception is, you know, what we have in the current sinking fund, because of the bond, you know, we, we're good, just, that, that would be their perception right now. In my opinion, if you had 100 people in a room that we did roadshows to a couple of years ago, 99 would say, that's what I thought, I'm just saying.
Right, and, and so, you know, a lot of, a lot of what we're talking about, what I've seen over being here and going for a sinking fund replacement when the law is expanded, uh, going for, you know, other millages, a lot of this is part of the campaign. The education needs to be there, the communication, I would say, um, any lack of clarity that any individual has, it's all of our collective jobs to help clarify. And, and typically, so I, I'm seeing that there isn't necessarily disagreement of going three mils or even 2.75 or, you know, something close to that because of all the needs. And it, it really does become the, the campaign and whatever method we use. The facility assessment, this large book, there are pictures, pictures in here of things that were not included in the bond. I could understand if I was sitting at home, supporting of the schools, hearing there's a bond, this is gonna take care of everything forever. But part of the campaign that I, I believe we've done before is like, if, for anyone that's a homeowner, if you put on, the roof might not be a good example, although I don't think they last 30 years anymore, mine did. But, you know, my neighbor that did it or down the road, you know, it's only lasted them 15 to 20 years. You know, whatever we do, especially equipment, the refrigerator at home's not gonna last forever, neither is the furniture. And when we get to technology, the useful life of technology and how quickly technology advances, that is a huge part that no one should've believed it lasts forever.
The question's not gonna be looking at the pictures and saying it's not needed. The question's gonna be, why wasn't it in, why didn't you ask for this back in the bond? Or why didn't you ask this the last time you renewed the sinking fund? Why all of a sudden now, you know, all of a sudden you realize that, you know, you've got all these needs? Why, why has the district not been more open with the public to say, we need more money?
And, and I wouldn't-
And that's, that's what the questions that- And that's, that's what the questions that people are gonna ask.
And, and if that is.
And we need to be able to have a response.
If that is something that you're wondering about, too, because I've been here a long time, there were discussions that went on in 2017 and 2018 when the sinking fund laws were expanded, as to what rate are we going to ask taxpayers? We definitely want to capture the new allowable uses for the sinking fund. And it was determined that the needs were so great, and sinking fund is pay-as-you-go, that it was, we really, as a district, needed to go for a bond. And so the decision was to just keep the sinking fund flat at the rollback rate it was, .7165.
But we could've gone for a $300 million bond.
Yeah, we could. So I think it's.
Excuse me?
We couldn't.
Why not?
Politically, politically, that's not where the board said.
Politically, politi, that's what we're talking about, the taxpayers. That's the politics.
To remind you what happened. So when we did the assessment in 2017, in 2018, we had $230 million of needs identified. We cut that down to 200 because that's where our stakeholder group felt would be good enough to go forward, and the board agreed to get that passed in the community. It's $30 million that we took out of the bond that we still need.
But first, the board was never told that, but that, that's just 30 million, not an extra 100 million.
That's actually not true at all.
I, I'm gonna say.
Right, and I told you plenty of times, we shared that information. We can ask the other board members over there to come back and remind you. We totally did.
I was a community member at the time, and I remember asking, why didn't we ask for what was necessary?
Yep.
Because in my conversations, no, I'm, I'm actually agreeing what was said, was that there was a conversation had amongst the board that there was more that was needed but wasn't asked for. So I agree, it was a conversation that there was a need for more than $200 million. So to your point, if we, if we need to, going also to Siva's point, and what you presented, if we need 3 mills, we need to ask for the 3 mills. Now, do I prefer for us to ask for a 2.2? Probably. But then we don't wanna come back again in two years and say, can we ask for more money again? So to your point, we should ask for what we need now. And if, if the taxpayers say no, then we've, we've made an effort, and we come back again and ask again in the future. But we don't give up because it's what we need, right? When you give up, it's like, oh, you're just asking for something because it was extra.
That's right.
No. We keep going back to the taxpayers, and we say, we're not asking you this because we wanna, you know, pay Pat Watson a million dollars a year. We're asking for you, oh, I'm sorry, Pat, maybe next job.
But he's worth it.
Because we need this for our district.
No, but that, you're right, that erodes trust because we told them we were taking care of needs. And when we ask for less than what we need, we can't possibly take care of needs. And.
Good point, David.
Yeah, I mean, part of, and I distinctly remember that discussion, and I'll take it a step further, Dave, I remember, I, I think it might even be in the booklet or in a publication that we received, that we said 200 million would be covered by a bond and the 30 million we could increase the sinking fund because it was at such a low millage rate. So I think we did kind of plant the seed for upping the millage rate at that point. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but I thought that's where we came at the number 230 because we were thinking to combine with a higher sinking fund rate.
But it should, but based on what we've just heard, it's not, it wasn't 230, it was really 330 or 350.
But it was still higher. But the point, the fact of the matter is, we didn't ask for what we needed.
Yep.
But in some of it, right.
Because we really haven't had a board agreed to capital plan before just now. And, and even this capital plan that we've got right now does not include the STEM Center. So we still, even with everything, even 170 million, we still are short. And it doesn't include the buses, I don't think, in the, because we still have to take buses out of our operating funds. So we are short all over the place.
But we're maxed out.
Now, now, I, I don't know all the history behind it, but the fact that he asked for 200 for the high school may have set an artificial ceiling.
Well, not the high school.
No, no, there's.
60.
Oh, 70, sorry. So you didn't, why did we pick 200?
I don't know. I have not a clue. It was not really discussed with the board. It just came, it started about 100, it was at 180, and then it crept up to about 200 million? And that was the number.
To your point.
We, we, we got the first blush at it in December, and by January, we're deciding on this. This process, we've been working on for six or nine months. That's wonderful. This whole thing for the, with the $200 million bond was worked on by other groups and then came to the board basically with the dollar figures, not the assumptions. I mean, we talked about how many middle schools and, you know, different configurations. That was like in September, and that was wonderful. But when we finally got, put in a sharpen the pencil, it came really quickly. It was December, January, when Pat came in. Boom.
So I think, I think part of the story, and Tina, I might need your help, I think part of the story is also that when the district did have a higher fund equity, my understanding is that $20 million was taken out of fund equity to help fund the high school.
Of course it was.
That's some precedent in Michigan schools.
Sure, but that was back because of Proposal A and what we had before that.
Trust me, I understand all of that, but I think that's an important part of the story. When the district did have a higher fund equity, rather than asking for a larger bond, $20 million was taken out of savings.
Mm-hmm, true.
Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Oh, absolutely correct.
So remember, it was, there were three attempts to pass the high school. 2010 was the second attempt that coupled it with that sinking fund of .74. And that was in 2010. That .74 didn't even begin to 2014, as the high school didn't pass. Then in 2012, the high school passed. But because that was the third attempt, it was determined, and, and I don't, that, I was only there for a couple of years, that $20 million of the district's equity that was set aside in another fund would be used to keep the bond amount low.
Yep.
About 59 million.
Yep.
And so that, I can't help but believe, because we had very longstanding board members through the, through the time, or as we were talking about the sinking fund replacement and needing a bond, that that also entered into some of the thinking of, like, how far could we go?
And the reason the sinking fund was lower is to make that bond, the 2012 bond, at a zero-cost increase to the taxpayers.
The 2010, yes.
2012.
Yeah, you're right, Howard.
Oh, the.
When we finally passed the bond, the 60 million dollar bond for the high school, the reason why we, well, yes, well, so, you're right, it, it was 2010 and then 2012, it happened in pieces. But the whole idea behind reducing the sinking fund was to, was for a marketing purpose to the taxpayer to allow, to say, hey, we're gonna either lower your taxes or at least make it a break-even to you. We're not gonna do a tax increase.
Am I correct that that failed, and that the community voted no for the high school bond?
High school, and.
But yes, for reducing the sinking fund?
Right, correct.
So at the end of the day, there was a net loss.
Which, which means, of course, they didn't want a tax increase, and they wanted a tax savings.
And then two years later, going back again, taking $20 million out of fund equity to help offset.
To keep that bond number down. Mm-hmm, true.
And it is correct that with the new high school, roughly a third of it is the old and over. There wasn't a complete new high school.
Absolutely. Because that, because we had 10 years of debate over what that high school would be, because it started at 100 million or something.
So, I mean, which is, it's a history lesson, but it's also important because it goes to show why decisions were made the way that they were. And a lot of it came from fear and the reality of mistrust that had accumulated at the time we passed the last bond.
True.
We, the sinking fund has been way too low for way too long. I think the community can understand that.
We need to be able to explain that to the community as to why we haven't made this decision years ago. Correct.
Because we were looking, like we historically have, at the, in the totality of the tax package we were pushing or imposing on the community. So we didn't look at them in isolation. Now, and I'm just gonna go back to Tina's analogy about the roof. If you defer maintenance on something, it's gonna give you a way shorter shelf life than if you upkeep maintenance. So preventative maintenance is something I think the community can understand. If we, if we Band-Aid things, they're gonna give us a way shorter useful life.
Michelle.
If I may just wrap up the history lesson, when we opened the new high school in 2015, we also told the community it would be at least five years before we came back to them for anything, which was 2020. When we replaced the sinking fund to take advantage of the new laws, we did it for six years in May of 2018, knowing we would need to plan for a bond, and then that would put us out past, hopefully, a successful bond, which we did. So there is a lot of strategic planning and thinking that went through it, but we've had so much change, including with board members. It's tough when you don't know the history. I always like to say, I don't know what I don't know, and I'd love to learn from everybody, but that's just a little bit more of the history.
Oh, I think we should be optimistic because the bond initially was a daunting, daunting thing, especially for someone like myself who didn't know any of the history. And growing into that space over that year of the meetings before we voted, put it on the ballot, by the time we voted to put it on the ballot, I was sitting there thinking, my God, 200 million's not nearly enough for what we need to do. And, and by that time, it was, you know, the horse had left the station. So we worked hard, we talked to every community member we could, and we got it done. And I think that is just what we are just gonna have to keep doing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna briefly say to you, sorry, Michelle, I know you're ahead of me on mine, but it, to me, it is synonymous with the amount of trust that the community has in the school district and specifically in the board. And I think we worked hard over the last four years to be very transparent with the community. We opened every meeting we could. We share every document we can. We don't, and, which goes back to Michelle's point of, if we don't tell them what we need, that's lack of transparency. So telling them the number, even if it's higher than we think is marketable, we don't make decisions based on what we think is palatable or marketable. That, that's not exactly transparent. We base it on what the students need because the analysis has to be what's best for the students. And if we're, if we stick to that objective and we're completely transparent, I think that's how you maintain the trust, that, in my opinion, 20 years as a parent in this district, higher than it's ever been. So, you know, we, we have nothing to not be transparent about. I think that we have earned the trust that we have, and you get that by being honest. And if what we need is 3 mills, asking for 2.75, to me, it just doesn't seem consistent with what we were trying to do.
So, any last-minute points to wrap up? So if, I think the, from what I'm hearing, some of the concerns, and Pat helped me to answer this, if there are things or information that we need for the November 7th meeting, would you like for us to work through the president, or do you want us to share that today so you can decide if that's feasible to have by that timeframe?
I think it might be best us, Rebecca, to set up a Google Doc that people can put questions in, and then depending on what they are, any concerns, I'll work with President Van Gemmer.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable, Tina?
Can we talk for just one second about the document that Siva recommended, if it's possible to quantify into some kind of numeric figure, the, the savings that we received from taking a proactive approach in consolidating, right sizing buildings, and passing the bond?
So you'd like to add that to the.
Yeah, even if the net result still comes to 3 mills, can we come up with a dollar figure of what we think we may have saved, close as we can tell, by doing that? I'd like to see that.
So, so there are two pieces to that. There are operational savings, which has been on my and my team's list for a while to do something similar to a high school, and that's going to be the savings for the general fund once we are reconfigured in less than a year. The other piece is capital, and I know specifically that is what Siva started out speaking about, is of the $200 million bond, what might we rely on for savings? And given the reports that are done quarterly with the board, you would frame that with contingency dollars. But I will also caution all of us that the price escalation that we are seeing with current bids, we can't rely on that much. So to qualify this early, I'll let Paul chime in. I think it would be unrealistic, but we do agree we like stretch goals. And then from there, it would be a decision, if everything's done, that was planned in the bond program, and we have this much money left over, where does the board, where does administration, the superintendent recommend that money be spent? Still has to be within the parameters of the ballot language, and it may or may not be towards the sinking fund project.
Yeah, so if I may, I think at the September quarterly update, we had about $3.8 million of savings to date. We're incorporating now the savings or cost avoidance of having to buy property, so that gets added to that. I think 20 would be way beyond a stretch goal. It'd be, unless you're canceling projects, which, again, some districts challenge it with escalation. But again, if you said, you know, where is that, 7 and 1/2 to 10 million dollars? So a great example is, in our capital assessment, we have about $4.5 million for new construction at the IA in Bowers as part of the sinking fund option. Again, could those savings be used to potentially do the additions out of the bond, which then lowers that 179 million? Another great example, we'd heard from West Bloomfield, Parks Recs, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars, guess what, for parking lots and tennis courts and things like that, or at Pine Lake, that if you enter an agreement, that also lowers it. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. I think our job is to really work with Tina and Jake and the administration team to present you kind of a quarterly update on not just the bond, but here's the great things that have been done through a sinking fund, or here's some cost avoidance on some of the things we talked about for some roughing, so.
So, I'm thinking back to what Tina said a little while ago. I, I was under a misconception because I hadn't looked at the dates that carefully. It's always good to go in with, you know, two dates, the first bond or the first ballot request, and if it fails, go in for a second, you know, plan for a second as an if come. And Tina, you're right, it's unrealistic based upon the dates that we have to tell the county to say that we will go to the next, based upon the dates that are here, going to the next available date. So if we go May, the second bite would be November. And if we go August, the second bite would be March. Okay, so it's just looking, you know, you have to skip over the, the one, you know, skip over the next one because the dates just don't line up. I would like to request, you know, Mr. President, working with the administration, that we put a proposal on the, or a resolution on the next board meeting in two weeks for 3 mills for August. And I, for many reasons that I've enumerated over the evening, that I think for many reasons, not the less, least of which, I was just talking to Paul, you know, if we have new board members, they have to get up to speed and get on the road, you know, do the road shows and everything. Just give them more time so they're not thrust into it like Pat was, coming January 1st or February, starting, and all of a sudden, he's on the road trying to sell a bond. Or, so the new board members need time to get up to speed so they understand. So I think, personally, I think August is a much better date. So I would, I'd be going for a resolution that says 3 mills for August.
Do we pay for August?
No. I mean, I'm sorry, yes, we pay, until we pay for anything in 2023, and starting in '24, the March would be free, the August would be free, and the November would be free. If we use the May, we would pay for that.
November of '24.
Of '24. But '23, all three of those, we pay. And I think the number, 75 or 100,000?
Yeah. The last, the last one that we had that we had to pay for like that was upwards of 100,000, but to Lisa's point, you know, perhaps with the increase in absentee, et cetera, it wouldn't be so much.
Good point.
Paul?
No, in terms of information, I mean, I don't know where it's stored, sorry, where it's stored, just the information that we had for the road shows for the bond would be helpful.
I just shared those with you, so they should be in your inbox, four different slide decks. And I'll try to pull the videos. I think we shared those a while ago. Let me know if you don't see them in your bloomfield.edu email now.
Yeah, I see it in my inbox.
And then just obviously, reach out to me directly if there's additional things, and I'll get you anything else you need. And I'll see if we can find some of those videos. I know David and I were together quite a bit. We'll see if we can pull.
I remember, there were some places, there were two people there, we did a video. I mean, I'm just, you know, there was a lot of.
That was shared out, too.
A lot of information that was shared, and I just wanna read up on it.
And I would love to hear from the administration if August, you know, if you still want May. I, I've spent a lot of time here justifying August. If May is still your preference, really lay out the rationale for why, what is better for May and what against August, you know, why August, doesn't have to be done now, it can be done offline. You know, why August, doesn't have to be done now, it can be done offline, but just understanding why August is not the preferred date.
So President, okay. Hi, no problem.
Can you drive?
Yeah, I think so.
You okay?
You got your glasses?
I like my right contact.
Do you have your glasses?
No.
Just drive safe.
I have one contact, I just, like, it's really bothering me to, like, look out with the light and everything else.
No worries.
Driving me-
Do you need nitro?
And we, we definitely, we definitely need the data of all the districts in Oakland County. That's such a huge, powerful piece of information that no one would know that. No one would ever know that, right? We only have our own frame of reference.
Yeah, that, that's-
Because I, I spend a lot of time talking to community members about the bond, about that particular issue, you know, and that we're, this is not abnormal, this is not, this is actually quite modest, you know, in the scheme of our, of our sister districts. So I think we need to keep talking about that.
I think it might actually help, and we can discuss that, you know, down the road, the marketing campaign for this. But maybe it's helpful to see the history and how many bonds failed, so that people will understand why on earth we set the sinking fund so low. And like you said, Pat, we didn't really intend for the sinking fund, the lower amount to pass while the bond failed. So we were stuck with the worst of both worlds.
That was helpful for me when I first arrived in January 2020. I know Tina shared quite a bit of information. Looking at since, proposal A in 1994, looking at like communities, and what did they pass in sinking funds, and what did they pass in bonds since 1994? And comparing this to Anorthville, Inobai, East Grand Rapids, a Celine, a Gross Point, and things like that. And then also, if you have to look at it per student. So Vice President Kumar, looking at the agenda for the 17th. We have the three sessions, we have closed session for negotiations. We have the closed session for safety and security plan. And then we have a presentation on career and college readiness, and how as a school district, we prepare our students for the next level. This has been a long standard request of not only the current board brought it up, but the former board. That's-
Sorry, where are you at?
I'm looking at the November 17th.
Right, right, which item are you on?
Did you put on the link in the folder?
Yeah, which item, number wise? Oh.
Yep, go ahead in here. Click on the link in the-
Nine? Nine A, okay, okay, got it, okay.
Yeah, you'll want to use those.
Nine A. And then what about Board Business on Town? ABC. Ratification of the Bloomfield Hills Association of Early Childhood Educators Collective, oh, that's just- Ratification.
So the timing here, so we've got a closed session at 6 o'clock. Another, so then we have dinner, then another closed session, 7:30 for safety and security. So the public, in terms of a public comment, when would that be? 8 o'clock, 8:30?
When you reconvene at 6:30?
Oh.
It's number five.
I mean, I, I'm not looking at the agenda, I'm just looking at the, at this.
So it'd be 6:30?
Let me look at the, let me find the agenda.
So the closed session starts at 6:00, and then you reconvene at 6:30.
Tennis?
And then we go to public comment. President's report, super's report, consent agenda, general discussion, board business. Then another closed session.
Correct, and that was on safety and security.
Okay.
Is the resolution, if we take the recommendation, is that going, is the recommendation for the, for the sinking fund going on this agenda, or is it going on in December's board meeting?
The request would be for it to be added to this agenda.
Okay.
For the 17th.
Yes, and, and if the board chooses to have two resolutions drafted with a slightly different rate, different election date, we can certainly accommodate that. Because I'm hearing different election dates, and I've heard slightly different rates, although still at the upper end.
Is there any opposition to having it on the 17th?
No.
Having what, the resolution?
The board, the board discussion.
That's fine.
Yeah. I think we should be good to have it on the 17th.
All right, so Tina needs some direction, I don't have the worded. Is it, the resolution gonna be alternate resolutions? Is it gonna be one with the recog? I, I, personally, I would prefer one with your recommendation. And then if the board doesn't take it, they, they can suggest something different. But that makes it clear what your recommendation is, as opposed to something somebody else came up with.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
If you need it, amount on it, that was the wrong word.
And May or August is fine. August only concerns me if we need the second bite, we'd be missing the bidding window.
Right. So, I mean, you should make the recommendation to the date that you think is best, and then whatever discussion comes out of that, you know.
Agreed.
And as I said, I'd like to have the rationale in terms of why, why May versus August.
If we need the second bite, I'd be concerned about missing the bidding window. That's it. I can bring that-
So it's just a, so, so it's just a, a construction timing thing?
Mhm, yep, the bidding window, March 24 would miss-
I'm more concerned about passing the bond, which says, if we have to sacrifice the, the timing to make sure that it passes, which means we do the homework with the public, to have the research, to know that it's gonna pass the first time around.
Yep. And, and just a note, there still are bills that were picked back up that would eliminate the May election date and the August election date, moving it to June.
Right.
So for some reason, between now and then, or something changes, you know, our legal counsel's ready to-
And you've got lame duck, and you have a new adminis, a new senate and con, and house starting in January. So who knows where they end up?
So we'll, we'll-
And what hap, Tina, and what happens also if, with a grandfather? If by chance we put it on May, and then they eliminate May, do they grandfather anything that already is in the works? Who knows?
So we'll tidy that up. Anything else, Vice President Kumar?
Nope, I think we can move on to the study session agenda for December 1st. Call to order, followed by a closed session, closed session. This is superintendent evaluation, followed by public comment, and then getting to the study session. First in the agenda, 5A is IA tuition and budget updates. 5B, justice, equity diversion, diversity and inclusion update. 5C, board goal discussion, again, on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then item D is, you know, discussion of the framework for the following meetings. So let me ask you this. What is putting, or what's necessitating a DEI and Jedi discussion at the December study session?
It was part of the, the district and superintendent goals, to provide an update?
And it's a board goal, too.
To have it by December?
By, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We also need to have some discussion on, get started on 2023 district goals. So I think that also ought to be on there.
And to do that, you would want to have a joint meeting with the new board members. So the old board and the new board.
No, at least get started, and, and put an outline. Of course, it's gonna take a few sessions to get refinement, but we ought to get started.
So, Mr. Superintendent Rebecca, when are we planning on scheduling the training for superintendent evaluation, school advance?
We have to see who gets elected and what their availability is going to be.
So that's gonna be an additional meeting?
MASA indicated that we were to reach out after the election.
But what I'm saying is, it's not gonna be part of the study session, it would be an added meeting.
No, because it's a seven and a half hours.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that's the first part, and then it's a three-year implementation to fully implement it.
I remember it, three years. I had a question. Can we talk about onboarding at the December meeting?
Good point.
So, ye- yes, absolutely, you can add anything you'd like. Onboarding may-
Can you add that just to our 101 agenda, too? Because I did talk to, when we meet, you know, the, the meetings that we have.
Right.
I did talk to our president about that.
Yeah, so for the one-on-ones, the topic is whatever each board member chooses. So definitely, and then, you know, we can add the onboarding to the study session as well. Looking at the topics, if we add onboarding to this, that's going to be roughly with the 4:30 start, we're looking at about a five to six, six and a half hour meeting. I don't know if we should add anything after that. Just, that, that's a lot for that day. So Vice President Kumar, is it okay if we go ahead and add the onboarding as a discussion point? To talk about that at that meeting? By then, we'll know, you know, what people have got a lot-
Is that something we can separately discuss in one-on-ones?
Yeah, I was, I'm gonna separately talk about it with Pat, but I wanted to make sure that I at least am able to tell everybody what we talked about. So it's not like a-
Oh, sorry. So would it help to have the, the onboarding? Was it, Howard and Jennifer, do you remember? Is it a standalone onboarding, where we listed all the documents that new board members were gonna get? The onboarding procedure? I think it's part of the BOP, but maybe it's a standalone?
I think onboarding is, and again, Rebecca's gone through some training, I think through MASA. I think it's almost two pieces. There's the administration onboarding. But I think there's the board onboarding.
Board, board onboarding.
Okay, there's something that we have-
In terms of the mentoring, what do we do on a day-to-day basis? I mean, there's what the administration does, and going through the interviews, not the interviews, but the, the fact-finding sessions with each one of the cabinet.
Versus the board onboarding.
But there's this stuff of what, so that they know what to expect come January.
Yeah, we, we-
I, I think, I think that should be done off, outside of the time.
Yeah, I agree.
On December 1st, I'd rather hear about the rest of the district goals, the, the number three, the communication assessment, the evaluation system for non-teachers, administrators, just because that'll be our last time to-
It'd be your last time, but it's also our last time to plan before, because the next time will be a meeting. So we won't have an additional time to actually talk about what we're gonna do with our, with new. So it won't, it's more or less providing you with what's gonna happen, and to get feedback. So it won't be a lengthy conversation, because I'm gonna have the discussion with Pat prior to the meeting.
You know, you guys, if you do it, be, there may only be three of you, which doesn't violate the OMA, and then we can meet with Pat.
If we go 18 hours and it's too long, we've always had conversations to cut things off. But I'd like to at least have it added, if it's something that we have to prolong. Or if my conversation with Superintendent Wasson gets us to what we need, and we're gonna report back to, to our president, if it's enough, then we won't need to have that in the agenda.
Do we have an estimated time for each of these agenda items in section five?
No, I usually work with President Van Gember on that ahead of time. If you're asking for, it's difficult, right? So International Academy Tuition and Budget Updates. I could say that could be anywhere from 20 minutes to two hours, right? Knowing the conversations that we've had. The Jedi Program, the update on that, once you look through the documentation, there's a lot. That could be an hour, hour and a half. Board Goal Three, discussion, you know? That could be anywhere from 45 minutes to hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes, especially if you decide you wanna start laying out goals for the future, for the next board that's going to be there.
Is that sort of related to the, isn't that the Jedi one?
December 15th, 2022, looking at the board meeting and agenda frameworks. So when President Van Gember and I met today, we talked about probably needing 10 minutes to go over each agenda. We're, I'm not sure, I think a little over an hour so far, so we thought maybe 20 minutes. So it seems like it takes a little bit longer?
It's possible that another board meeting could be added if necessary.
It's difficult to get everyone's schedule?
No.
I'm, okay. The other thing I'd like to, I am, for what it's worth, I'm supportive of trustee Southward adding that agenda item as well. I think it's important for the board to have a conversation about onboarding, especially what your expectations are. And what I don't want to go back to is these one-on-one off, or two-on-one, or three-on-one conversations where directives are, are, are given, and then it's brought back, it's like, well, we don't want that. So if I meet with seven people, and seven people said, here are five things that I think-